City Council Public Meeting will come to order. Clerk will call the roll.
Councillors Cadiz.
Here.
Deion.
Here.
Hart.
Here.
Kilby.
Here.
Ferrera.
Here.
Ponte.
Reposo.
Here.
Tip.
Here.
President Kamara.
Here. Just want everybody to know Counselor Ponte is out of town and unable to attend tonight's meeting. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and not deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Motion over the public hearing.
Second. Motion over the public hearing has been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is now open. Item number one, Arminio and Cassandra Lima, 363 Miller Street, for removal curbing as follows. The existing opening at that property is eighteen feet six inches. Curb to be removed is nine feet. There's no curb to be added. Combined opening proposed after alteration is twenty-seven feet six inches. The existing parcel is served by an eighteen-foot-six-inch curb opening. The applicant proposes to expand the opening by addition nine feet for a total opening. Our location will be twenty-seven feet six inches. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents to this public hearing? Any opponents? Seeing none, I would take a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing has been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Can we go already to the Committee on Finance? City Council Committee on Finance will come to order. Clerk will please call the roll.
Councillors Cadiz.
Here.
Deion.
Here.
Hart.
Here.
Kilby.
Here.
Ferrera.
Here.
Ponte.
Reposo.
Here.
Tip.
Here.
President Kamara.
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and not deemed acknowledged and permissible. We have a couple of individuals who signed up for citizens' input time. First, we have Richard Branca, subject matter.
I'm not first.
Well, you're first on the list. Yes, you are.
Oh.
Richard Branca, subject matter, revenue.
I'm going to do something I haven't done before. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. Now, listen, Ms. Bouchard, on behalf of everybody that has a bald spot on their head, we apologize. Ms. Ayen, for the future, I apologize. All right. With all that being said, I came in here in March, and we started talking about homelessness and all that stuff. Well, today you guys want to talk about generation. And I just want to take the opportunity to talk about something that I've worked on my whole life, which is the opportunity to bring campgrounds into the city. Now, at the time, I won't publicly say where the location is, but I want to use the ten acres of land as an example, just because it's simple math. On an acre of land, we can have thirty spots. At three hundred dollars a spot, that is now nine thousand dollars a month revenue. Multiply that by a year. I just add another zero. And then multiply that by ten acres of land, and we're looking at a way to create three million dollars a year. Now, it's the beginning of the tiny homes, which is something that everybody wants to talk about, but it's a way to speed it up by offering it to people at first with campers so that they can build their own tiny homes. Now, to figure out how many spots are on the property, the average tiny home is eight hundred square feet, so you have that, you have parking. I estimate at twelve hundred square feet. I know for me personally, that's enough for me to park my camper, have my one-star garage, put my race car trailer there, and park my truck. And I'll be willing to pay three hundred dollars for that little post stamp. And I know there's a lot of other homeless people who are living in their cars who can't afford something like this. You know, when it comes to the future, because this is once again about revenue, I don't think the problem's about money coming in, it's about how it's getting spent. So if I could just offer a suggestion, I stayed out of this year's budget hearings. Base it at four hundred and ten million and see how far we can go. Because if you have the revenue of the campgrounds and everything that that's capable of becoming, which is a money cow, you know, I can have a racetrack.
You have thirty seconds left.
Yes, sir. I can have a racetrack in a building the size of Dristol Rink and put on fun entertainment. This is something that can grow and grow and grow for the future. And like, once again, if we base the budget on four hundred and ten, and then we add this income from these campgrounds, we've basically paid off the water department bill for everybody. And I think that we live in a time of day where we should not have to pay for what is the one thing we need to survive. Thank you.
Do you try to wrap it up, please? Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Next, we have Kelly Buchanan, subject matter, illegal homeless encampments.
Good evening.
Good evening. You want to start?
Yes, sir. Yeah. Good evening. I'm back again. My neighborhood, it's even worse, it's never changed. Two years I've been fighting these illegal encampments. Two years, over two years. And what I said was going to happen two years ago when I spoke with the mayor of July of 2023 is now come to pass. We went from approximately a hundred homeless people to we got four, five, six, seven hundred. We don't even know the number. They just broke up the encampment down at the rail trail. Great job, but guess where they all went? Down by us. We're dealing with so much down there, there was already a fire down there. So you guys can check. We budget, we're spending three and a half million dollars plus on homeless, and the problem's getting worse and worse. So clearly, what we're doing isn't working. We're supplying them with everything they need, meaning needles, and we are the taxpayers. We're doing it through grants to Star. We're bringing them needles and whatnot so they can do illegal drugs. Make that make sense, that we're giving them. Why are we locking up drug dealers? What if they're selling drugs to keep their roof over their head for their kids? I mean, where do we say, all right, enough with the lawlessness and get back to just common sense? It doesn't matter, you can put all these people that are, you know, facing, dealing with addiction right now, you can put them in homes. They're not going to sustain them realistically. So the problem is, you're offering them treatment, and I know they're saying that you're not, and I know that the mayor has offered them treatment, they're offering them shelter. It might not be in Fall River, but if they truly want to get help, they'll go wherever it is that we can send them. Get the help. If they don't want to, we're allowing them to stay there. Why is this? We have to deal with all that. You go into the Highlands, I know, I'm in the Highlands all the time now, riding my bike. It's safe, it's clean, there's no encampments, not one. And I ride all over. You come to the South End, it's awful. It's awful. We have them everywhere, they're popping up everywhere. And I get people can't afford rents, but a majority is because of addiction. And if we don't solve that problem, it doesn't matter, you can put them in tiny homes, campgrounds, we're going to still have the same mess. How much money have we spent on the rail trail cleaning it up to allow them to go back? Down by me, it's disgusting. Let me let my yard get that way. Y'all will be down there in a minute. I'll be fined. I'll have liens on my house. Let me not pay my taxes. I'm paying taxes, I get nothing in return. They're getting high right in public, broad daylight. Look at the police logs. Don't take my word for it. Go, anybody can do it. There was calls made this week. I'm just asking, I understand, you guys all passed the budget, I believe everybody, I think, Michelle, you might have been the only one that said, no, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I'm pretty against it. We have to see what we're budgeting, where's our money being spent? I'm paying all these taxes, but I'm getting nothing in return. My area looks like the slums. We look like Kensington, Pennsylvania. We look like Skid Row. If you live in the Highlands, you're not worried about it, because you don't look out your window and this is what you see. You're not stepping over heroin package, you're not stepping over dirty needles. I'm tired, I'm tired, I'm tired. I've been doing this for over two years now. When is enough going to be enough? When are we going to bring law and order back? I'm not asking you guys to do something, I'm asking you to follow laws. Drugs are illegal, yet we're giving them the means to do them. Make that make sense. We call it harm reduction, where's our harm reduction? Where's our harm reduction? Where's the taxpayer law-abiding citizens who go to work every day, who do what we're supposed to do? Where's ours? Why does a small percentage get to decide how everybody else gets to live? I was on the rail trail. I was literally broad daylight, two o'clock in the afternoon, the day before they did the raid. Watched not one, but two females shooting up on a bench, broad daylight, not even trying to hide it. That's what you see in Kensington. Oh, that won't happen here, it's happening here. And I told the mayor, and I'm not trying to put him on blast, I told him this two years ago, and he kind of giggled at me, oh, Kelly, we're not, no, that's, how do you think it starts? What's next? The tents are going to be in front of our houses? And we're going to deal with it? As homeowners, it's not fair. You go to the Highlands, you don't see it. I don't know how, I know, I believe you live in the South End, I don't know who else lives in the South End, but if you don't, come drive through our seats, I'll take you for a ride through our streets. You want to see what the South End of Fall River looks like? I don't know the last time you've been here. Come and see.
Can you try to wrap it up, please?
Yeah. We get three, I get three minutes to...
Motion, wait, motion, wait, the rules have been made in second. Any in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, I appreciate it. Three minutes, I know I come here, and I'm not trying to put, but I'm just asking for common sense. I'm asking for the laws to be followed. It's not working. The homeless committee, I mean, they're making money. Stop the money. I guarantee they won't be down there, Star won't be down there giving them needle packages. I guarantee it. You stop the money, it's not going to continue. People don't care about those homeless, I shouldn't say that, I can't say all, but a majority don't. It's a cash cow. Three and a half million dollars, what have we done? But it's grown and gotten worse and more dangerous. So let's stop the money. Let's take that three and a half million dollars, there's elderly people not making decisions whether they're going to get medication or eat, or pay their light bill, or veterans that are sleeping on the street. Let's take care of people who want it, want the help. And any of the ones that are down there that truly want the help, they'll go. If it's Worcester, it's Worcester. If you truly want to get better, you can't save people. And this, we go and checking on it, how many elderly people are we checking on? How many doors is the fast, I think it's the fast team, how many doors of elderly people are not going to see if they're okay? Again, with choices we make, there comes consequences. I get addiction, I understand, once they're in the realm of all this, but it's not our responsibility. But people who have family members down there, I know if I had anybody that my loved ones were down there, I promise you, if they overdosed in a tent with a needle that Star gave, I would be trying to sue the city, and it wouldn't be about money, because we're giving them means to kill themselves. That's like giving somebody suicidal a gun, but no bullets. They're going to find the bullets. Why would we give them the gun? Why are we giving them the ammo that's going to kill themselves under the rules of harm reduction? Anybody that knows anything about addiction, they know if somebody's sick, they're going to share with whoever. They don't care. If that's the only needle, that's what they're going to use. If you talk to most addicts and they're being honest, they're going to tell you that. They're going to take whatever they can get, because that's what they do. But you know what's going to save their lives? Maybe if they are in jail. Maybe if we arrest them and they go to jail, maybe they get clean and sober, and they're alive. You know what? Then we can look at making laws where five years down the line, if you get out, you're clean, you're sober, that gets expunged from your record, no cost. I mean, that's something we can look at, but it's still a crime to do illegal drugs, it's still a crime to rob stores, it's still a crime to rob from people's yards, it's still a crime to trespass. These are all crimes, but yet, a small percentage don't have to follow, but we do. Make it make sense. Maybe I'm wrong. Make it make sense. I'm sorry, Michelle, I know you, did you have a question?
No, I just want to make three statements. The first...
You just want to make a comment?
A comment.
You can go, Ms. Buchanan.
I'm sorry.
You can go, your time is up, you can go. She's just going to make a comment.
No, I'm good, go ahead. What I was going to say is, I agree with what you're saying. I find that we had to have eight hundred calls for service to the rail trail before action was taken. Every crime under the book, in the book. Eight hundred calls, that, that, that's, it boggles my brain. And lastly, I know for fact, because I saw it with my own eyes, so yes, Star, they give them ten to twenty needles, they give them everything they need to do the drugs, the pot to cook it, to be able to test the fentanyl. But what really, really, I don't even know what the word is, blew my mind, is the fact that they also enclose instructions on how to shoot up. That blew my mind completely. And, and, I don't know.
Addiction, because...
And I don't even know what to say to you.
Because what we're doing is, we're keeping people down. They're never going to get better. You can't give everybody the means and expect them to want to get help, they're not going to get help. And we are doing it, the government is doing it, because it's a cash cow. Follow the money. I would, I request a fiscal audit of the city. I want to see where my tax dollars go, and why don't we have a fight? Why can't, I don't care how much it costs, I'm sure there's plenty of homeowners like myself. You know, when's something going to get done? If I can rally people up to say, hey, let's withhold our taxes, so if City Hall isn't getting funded, is something, would that change something? I mean, I don't want to do, I try to follow the laws, I try to do, live the best life I can following the rules, but it's not fair that I have to live, we have to live, my community has to live in hell and deal with this. It's dangerous, it's not just for me, for my community.
I think we all agree with you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Counselor Hart, man.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I just wanted to, with the fire, was it at that same location where the last one was? And what, people from the rail trail came down, they're now down at Bay Street?
So yes, it was somebody...
And then also too, are they, the people from the rail trail, are they going under that track where the track is?
Oh, yes, yes. So they're all down there, they're living at the top of Kennedy Park, all through the park, they're out there broad daylight.
So you go up that road, you go up that road, and then off to the right?
The whole park, the whole park, the whole park. So, and as far as the fire, it was last Thursday. The response was unbelievable, and I can, I don't have proof, but when you hear multiple propane tanks blowing up, that gives you kind of idea what's going on, right? So, and I know there was, because I went down there, and I know there was an arson investigation. So if it was accidental, there wouldn't be an arson investigation. Again, I get people, like, people who were addiction, but we cannot continue to allow this. When are we going to say, okay, when everybody's running around housing, they shoot, like, why is that fair for the rest of the community? Because they want to, it's criminal. You arrest the drug dealer, why aren't we arresting the people who are doing it? When they overdose, instead of letting them, releasing them, why don't we send them to treatment, for, or jail? Maybe we'll save lives.
All right, thanks, Kelly.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
The campground is on Florida, the national values. Next, if Dan Rico, subject matter, abusive problem.
You have three minutes.
There's this gentleman, Johnny Harris, on Facebook. He actually goes into research about the poverty industrial complex, which there is money to be made off of people being in need, being on welfare, being impoverished, being poor, being harassed, the bloody blue crap, excuse the French, just for speaking up to people that think that they're more powerful than we, the people, okay? And you're like, oh, I've heard this guy on the radio, here he goes again. Yeah, here I go again. I'm going to keep speaking out, I am not going to be intimidated to speak out. What I feel that should be done in all fifty states, excuse me, forty-eight, and I'm just tired of the way our government's running, and how people are poor, and people are rich, and there's no incentive for anybody to get ahead in the middle, the middle class. You hear people, landlords, rent control, you hear this in housing, you hear that in housing, but you don't really see what's going on behind the scenes with, obviously, you're hearing it from the stories of what's going on with the homeless stuff, you're hearing that, it's plain as day. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that Trump wants to put most of these people in either homeless shelters, mental wards, or almost like assisted living hospitals. And we can't let that happen. If people are law-abiding citizens, have no criminal record, have no, anything on their record, why are you going to demonize a person for homelessness when it's a human right and a shelter right? And this millionaire's tax and everything else that's getting funded within this state that's going on, because, you know, HUD's going to be closing, shutting down, Medicare's going to be going back to the states, all the funding is going to be going back to the states. So I want transparency in housing, getting off of Reagan's trickle-down effect welfare system. It needs to end, guys. You guys have the legislative power to do a lot of certain things, implement money in this account, implement money in this account for the homeless, and implement money in controlling, and maybe keeping an eye on the places like the Fall River Housing Authority, making sure that they're in check with people's civil rights, just like other housing units too. Because a lot of these people make up their own rules. How would you like it if, you know, I came down, ripped out your homeless camp?
Can you try to wrap it up, please?
Or I came into your apartment and I had a request order?
Yeah, ten seconds.
Yeah, that's fine, Joe. If I came into your apartment and, you know, messed up your stuff and, you know, violated your rights and didn't leave you a note, you know, Mr. Kilby, how would you like if I came? For an example, not pointing the finger at you.
All right, thank you very much, your time's up, my friend.
Yeah, can I, can I just extend it, please? Let's say if I came in...
No, you can't extend it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no problem.
All right, thank you.
I just think that if, you know, people should leave notes and not go in people's apartments, and that's the culture around in this city for the last thirty, forty years in public housing, and I think you guys are gerrymandering the votes too through public housing.
Thank you very much.
I got a whole stack of election ballots in my mailbox still, so I can keep going on and on peacefully and lawfully, of course.
Thank you. Next, if Carlos sees the subject matter, accountability.
Carlos, you have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening. I'm here to ask a simple question. When are you, as a city council, going to stop talking and take actions on behalf of the citizens of Fall River? Let me mention a few obvious reasons why I have that question. First of all, our budget has narrowly doubled to... First of all, our budget has narrowly doubled to over a half a billion dollars, at ninety percent increase since the vice principal mayor has been in office, with no improvement in the quality of life of our city. No affordable housing, understaffed public safety, underperforming schools, terrible streets, but six hundred thousand dollars worth of unpaid increases. I think we have to reexamine our priorities. We just suffered a terrible tragedy as a city. But we see no action in increasing the demanding, um, on the, the fire department to the level in the National Fire Protection Association ten, uh, seventeen-ten standard. This, and despite the fact that this city has known for over twenty-five years. As a matter of fact, there is a council still in this chamber who voted against it. We also see shortfall of two million dollars in our health cap fund. Again, and despite the fact that the mayor was warning that this will happen before he talk office as mayor. And each council receive a copy of their letter, send it to him and to the chairperson of his transition team more than once. There was, uh, of course, ignored by both, the incompetent mayor and you as a city council. The same warning was given to, I'm not the good with numbers mayor, about the trash, and again, was ignored. And again, the taxpayers had to pay. It's time for you as city council to hold this mayor accountable. I encourage all citizens of Fall River to vote in the next upcoming election. Our government only works for, for us if we elected representatives of the people. People, not politics. Vote, let your voice be heard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number two, it's a resolution conveyed with the Director of Engineering and Planning and Administration to develop a comprehensive funding strategy to match supplement of the city's annual chapter ninety allocation to increase investment in roadway improvements. It was adopted on July fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five, a whole discussion and table applicable. Can everyone at the table, please, just introduce themselves and tell us what position you're in for the city, please?
Mike Dion, interim director, interim city administrator and director of community development.
Daniel Higgyar, Director of Engineering and Planning.
Emily Arpke, Finance.
So, I guess I can get things started, might be the quickest and most efficient way to get through this. I know during budget discussions, there were conversations about long-term planning, capital improvement plans, uh, most specifically having to do with streets and sidewalks that fall under my jurisdiction. So I was encouraged to hear that discussion. Um, internally, we have had those discussions as well, and I was glad to see that that resolution made it on to tonight's, uh, finance committee. So with that, um, I just gave you just a little handout with just some facts. This year, for chapter ninety funding, and for those in the audience that don't understand what chapter ninety is, it's the state law that provides and funnels monies to municipalities based upon mileage of streets within your jurisdiction, and when taxes are collected, that those monies are allocated based upon one of those criteria. For the last number of years dating back to two thousand and twelve, the state has level funded chapter ninety funding to all of these municipalities at about two hundred million dollars. So since two thousand and twelve until last year, or really beginning this year, fiscal year, we've been level funded at about one point eight million dollars. So one point eight million dollars in two thousand and twelve is a pretty substantial amount of money to put towards streets and sidewalks. Thirteen years later, that same one point eight doesn't do much for you. Just like your own home budgets, right? You, you look at what you made in two thousand and twelve, it'd be very difficult to survive and make improvements based upon that. Luckily, and to be completely transparent, you'll see in item two, in a little handout that I gave you, in January of two thousand and twenty-five, Governor Haley proposed a five-year increase in the amount of chapter ninety funding to go out to the municipalities, by fifty percent. So that means over the next five years, she committed an additional fifty percent of funding, for a total of three hundred million dollars that get sent out to the communities. That resulted in an increase from our one point eight million a year to two point six million a year. So of course, we can do much more than we could last year with the one point eight that we were given. So we're, we're approaching being even with the increased costs of concrete, asphalt, labor, and all of those items from what it was in two thousand and twelve with that increase. In addition to that, after the millionaire's tax fair share, um, legislation that's been enacted in the state, collected, uh, throughout the area, she appropriated an additional eighty million dollars to go towards chapter ninety funding. So we will be getting an increase of six hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars to the city of Fall River. This was just done in the end of June, once the budget was completely passed. So this year, the city will receive a total of three point three million dollars in state funding to be utilized for the reconstruction of roads, sidewalks, and other categories that, that fall under chapter ninety's spending. So when we look at what was flat funded at one point eight for a number of years, yes, we are seeing a dramatic increase to three point three from the state's, uh, forwarding to us. A number of years ago, um, the council appropriated a number of monies, um, labeled as streetscape projects through Bedford Street and Columbia Street, some of South Main. Um, over the last year or two, we've been able to borrow those funds and put those towards some major projects like Bedford Street Reconstruction, the Bedford Street-Robeson Street intersection, and now Columbia Street as well. So there was a time when, when the council did appropriate, I think it was like five or six million total at the time, which is just about expiring. So the expiration of those funds, and the conversation of, okay, where do we go from here? And determining, is there an opportunity for additional funding over the next five years or ten years for some long-term planning to supplement the amount of monies that we have to reconstruct streets and sidewalks in the city? In the handout that I gave you also, on page two, you'll see at the top, which is two thousand and twenty-five through two thousand and twenty-six roadway reconstruction under contract. So we currently have three relatively large contracts, um, already underway. And again, that would be the Bedford Street, uh, Robeson Street intersection, Bedford Street to North Main Street, and then Columbia Street. And in the side, uh, aisle or the side column, I've listed there what the cost is for these projects, so that you can have a real apples-to-apples, orange-to-orange understanding of what it costs to complete these projects. I would say that Bedford Street and Columbia Street, they're not your ordinary streets, Columbia Street specifically. And when you look at what the per linear foot cost is, that's because we're dealing with pavers, removing some pavers, restoring some paved areas near the churches, um, a number of things that make these streets relatively expensive to reconstruct. Additionally, once we, just, we, once we figured out what the funding mechanism was and how much we would be getting, you'll see that another set of street contracts had just gone out, the bids are due on Thursday. And that would be for the street listing that you see there, and I've also broken down what those streets cost per linear foot. So you can get an understanding of what things cost. And then also, the last page, you'll see the streets that we completed from two thousand and twenty-four fiscal to two thousand and twenty-five. So one, you can see a, a listing of the streets that we were able to complete, some of the specifics to them, some have no sidewalk, some have no curb, so of course, those streets are cheaper per linear foot to build. But then you can look at what were the costs per linear foot for those types of projects. And we have three hundred and ninety-six feet per linear foot, and we have two hundred and fifty dollars per linear foot. So in just a year, although completely different types of projects, we've gone up, if we look at the Stafford Road project, that was three hundred and ninety-six per linear feet. And then we look at the bids that are coming in on the fourteenth, about the same amount of work, a hundred dollars per linear foot increase, on what the estimates are. And, um, my fingers are crossed, as the bids come in, we're usually pretty close, uh, within a percent or two of, of what that is. So although we are receiving additional funds from the state, costs do increase, just like everything else. And we're encouraged, both as an administration and, uh, hearing from what people say in the neighborhoods and what this council says, that there is some appetite of additional funding. So I think this is an initial conversation, that we can start having this conversation. I think ultimately, five million dollars a year is about what the engineering department can handle as far as overseeing construction projects, without needing additional staff to do so. Um, we're, we'll be at about that this summer, with the three projects that we have going on, the new projects coming in, and the next set of streets that are going out. That's, that's, we're stretched about as much as we can handle in-house. So with that, I can entertain any questions that you have, and to continue the discussion.
Thank you, Councilor T seven, Councilor Poto.
Thank you. Hi, Mr. Agia.
Hi.
Um, so just two questions, and, and one is more of a request. Often people ask me, where, where does my street or sidewalk end up on the quote list of getting fixed? I don't know if you have a running list that you could share?
We, we absolutely do. So a number of years ago, well before I started, um, the city actually hired a consultant to do an analysis of all of our streets. It's a little bit old at this point, but it is a framework of streets, I think it was two fifty, two thousand and fifteen, maybe, when, when it was done, maybe even earlier, um, and the number of streets that needed repair and restoration. So we have that list to start. Then we also have a running list of calls that we receive. So this is all in my office, and it's all public information if someone wants to call and ask. So when we look at streets to be reconstructed, I've established a hierarchy and really a formula that we use to decide, what are we doing? I start that list first with, well, first, what's the condition of the street? Two, are there any utilities within that street that don't fall under my jurisdiction that need to be replaced? So what we find ourselves now doing is following up wherever the gas company has been. So they've dug up a lot of this city, and there's still a lot more to go. So what we found is, when we follow the streets that they've done, so that's usually the biggest improvement that needs to be done. Gas comes in, they destroy it. We've been able to, on streets that need greater reconstruction other than just their patching, we've been able to receive some funds from Liberty Gas that offset what they would have had to have done for a patch, and utilize that towards full reconstruction of the street.
Is there, is there a necessarily, like, formula that how that works?
Well, there is, so we will look at a number of streets. The gas company will say, Danny, John Texera is the gentleman who deals with pavement restoration. I've looked at, let's say, Charles Street, for instance, is one that's, it's on the new. If we go back in and do a nine-foot patch right now, you still have a horrendous street. So at that point, we go and look at the street, yes, it's already been on our list, gas is done. I contact Paul Furlan in the water department. Paul, do you have any issues with needing to install new water, installing new sewer? If the answer is no, then that street becomes a priority. Because now we're not doing work on top of something that needs additional work after we're done. So, yes, but there's, there are, again, only a number of streets that I can tell the gas company, we can take your money, because I can commit to doing those streets. In years past, when I came in, I found a number of times where the monies came in, and those streets weren't done. The city did not fix those streets. They took the gas company money, and some of those streets still have temporary patches from the gas company, because I've made a commitment that, and it's in writing with the gas company, these are the streets that you are providing funding, these are the streets that we're letting you not go in and finish. It's incumbent upon me to make sure those streets get done. Because those homeowner, homeowners are now sitting on a temporary patch that we can't let go more than a year or two. So that's kind of how I've been dealing with it, moving in. And then, that's about half and half, we deal with gas company streets like that. But then even the, the streets that are on the, the ongoing list, many of them, the first thing I'll do is I'll call the gas company, where is this on your list? Cause they have a list of the entire city. I just called, I had a meeting today, and my question to them was, hey, Bedford Street looks great, and it's only in binder. But now I get to North Main Street, and Central Street, from North Main to Milliken Boulevard, is a mess. Now even more noticeable because Bedford Street looks so good. And I wanna be able to connect Bedford Street to the waterfront. That little pinch point of Central Street, not going down the hill, but the piece in front of, uh, what used to be Drifty Adalbo, you know, where the Santana Drive-Thru is. That's like a weak link right now, that I would like to continue down that corridor. The response was, well, it's not on our list for five years. So then I respond to them as, I really can't let this street sit another five years, it's falling apart. So then, there's a negotiation with, can you put it on your work for next year? And that's, that's the conversations that we have weekly, um, trying to get them Bedford Street. They weren't going to continue Bedford Street through the intersection, and now they're down to Quarry. So in order for me to do the Robeson Street and Bedford Street intersection, I had to ask them to make that a priority, which they did. Hyacinth Street, same thing. Hyacinth Street was horrible. Uh, Diamond needed gas. They were back and forth with when they were gonna replace the gas main in Hyacinth Street. That was another one where it was, okay, make it a priority, give me your patch money. We paved the first half of it already, from New Boston Road to Bullock. They've just finished the gas. The next contract that's due Thursday is the remainder of Hyacinth Street. But it's important to follow up on those. And then it's also important to go back and look at the lists of the people that have been sitting and waiting, and the calls. This street, we have, we have a street Pond View, does anybody know where Pond View is? It connects Amity to a dead end, so it's across the street from Henry Lloyd. Small little four-hundred-foot road, has two or three people on it, it is atrocious. All the people in the nursing home park on that street. So I've been here four years, the woman that lives in that house, really, the, the one house that's primarily around that corner, comes to see me every year. And I've committed to her that I will get that street done. That's one of the streets we've been able to add in here. So we manage the big projects along with the small ones. Railroad Avenue, does anybody know where Railroad Avenue is?
Can we just try to answer the questions instead of playing a survey of where the streets are?
So, very small.
We get the message, Mr. Agia, we understand.
Okay, I'll be quiet.
No, I'm just saying, we don't need to play.
I was asked to be here, so I don't know.
I, I get it, so let's, the council, any more questions, council?
Yeah, so, so, Mr. Agia, my, my concern to what you were just talking about is the littler streets.
Yep.
So I think that's something we often hear about, because we do the big streets and the, and the throughways, but I, I guess my bigger question was, and I think you may have answered it, in the order of priority, and I appreciate working with the gas company and all that, but the smaller streets end up really becoming our responsibility to handle. And I guess my concern as a council is to make sure that those don't get, don't fall by the wayside because of the bigger projects, that's all.
Sure, and, and if you look at, I can give you the list of all the streets we've done since I've been here, but if you look at what was completed in twenty-four and twenty-five, does anyone know where Estes Street is, off of Locke? Little Dead End, right, off of Dickinson. That's a pretty small street. So, we've been able to find Emery between Bush and Plymouth, very small little streets. And if you looked at the lengths, some streets a hundred and seventy-five feet, two hundred and thirty-five feet. We did two sections of Concord Street, two very small little, but it's, those are cheaper streets to do. They don't have sidewalk, they don't have curb. So we've made sure, Pond, again this year, a hundred and ninety feet. So the small projects are in there as well.
Okay.
Um, when funding increases, then of course, we can do more big projects, and we can do more small projects.
If possible, if you could share that list that you have running, I'd be curious just to see where, where everything stands.
Yep.
I appreciate it, thank you very much. I yield, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor T one, Counselor Dean.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Mr. Agia, thank you for, for being here, and, you know, the geographical lesson of where the streets are.
I didn't know, I didn't know where many of them were either, so.
It's okay. Uh, just talking about the, the funding source, and the reason I put this, uh, resolution forward is just because, you know, we've been stagnant with funding and, um, having the appropriations based solely just on chapter ninety for road repairs, that are not just keeping up with, uh, the inventory that we have. And, and again, we'll never catch up, you and I've had this conversation, we'll never catch up, uh, completely with all our roads, because, you know, after a fifteen, twenty-year life, uh, site lifespan on these roads, we're coming back and, uh, repairing for the most part of, you know, our major roadways or, um, some primaries and maybe some secondaries, right? So, uh, more of the residential neighborhoods are not seeing any, any road repairs. So there's some significant, um, discussion that needs to take place, and when we start talking about the average of the one point eight million dollars going back to two thousand and twelve, and it's, forgive me, it's been a little while since I've had to do some finance. And it's, forgive me, it's been a little while since I've had to do some finance, um, so. If my calculations are right, the the present day value of the one point eight million dollars is is about two point six million dollars, which just ironically ties out to what the governor has just given us. So essentially, we haven't seen an increase, well, we've 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 seen a decrease in funding up until this year. So we're now with the two point um six million dollars that we're getting just in the chapter ninety, that's getting us to the two thousand twelve levels.
Correct.
Uh, for funding. So when we start talking about what we're doing here, I I think there needs to be some additional funding uh that's put on top on top of the chapter ninety. And it's nice to see the millionaire tax uh being allocated for roadways, but again. You know, that's not even uh three quarters of a million dollars, right? So uh it's beneficial, but I I think we need to have a larger discussion of of, you know, appropriating additional funds. When we start talking about, I think it was in the nineties, uh when council president and, and I don't know if Mr. Hart was on the uh on the council, but Council Pereira was here. Talking about the wa- water uh infrastructural improvements and every year we were gonna put uh money aside to to make sure that we were repairing so many mileage of of water mains. Each of those phases are, you know, close to four and a half, five million dollars and we're at one point eight million for infrastructure. So I think at a minimum, and I'm heck, I'm glad to hear that, I think your number is about five million dollars and I guess in terms of what we can manage internally. Um, that's really where I was kind of going in in terms of what I would like to see between a chapter ninety uh and some funding coming in from the city. It's it's about a five million dollars uh annually, year over year. So I'm glad to hear that and I'm I'm assuming that the administration is in support of that, you know, and and throwing additional money into uh this fund. So I guess to talk a little bit about the strategy, would it be? And I know we're early on, but would we be looking to borrow that that money, the use of free cash? How would how would we be looking to commit? I I guess it would be an additional two point five million dollars if the target number is five million.
I think we'd look at both of those scenarios in terms of uh going off a bond, using some free cash. Um, I know Emily is putting together the capital plan. I think it's gonna be a, uh, I think this is going to be something that's gonna see in the capital plan. And, you know, I agree with you and we should be higher, uh, we should, we should be doing more roadwork in the city. It's important, you know, for the residents. So I I agree with you, um, at your five million dollar amount. And I think that's route to go in in terms of um seeing if we can fit some of it into um uh the budget, which I probably probably won't. Um, but looking at the capital plan and doing some bonding. I think I, when I first started, um, uh, a long time ago, I mean, Mayor Lambitt went out and did bonding for um about ten million dollars. Uh, we had a ten million dollar bond from Community Development.
Right.
Um, I wanna, I wanna say, don't correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was like twenty something million dollars in roadwork or something like that.
Forty-two seven.
Yeah.
Forty-two million for seven miles worth of roadwork.
In the late nineties, right?
Yeah, yeah, and I I remember because uh Community Development was paying for, I believe, the interest on that bond. So it's definitely something that we need to look at and we will look at it, definitely.
And then I I guess, um, if we can talk about just capital items, I I would like to see, especially now that Liberty Utilities is coming in and digging up all our roadways like to in um. To actually get an updated cap um street pavement management report that we have, I think Beta did it last.
Yeah, I I can send out a request for them to see what they would do to update it.
Yeah.
I I did go through it and luckily, we have redone a lot of the streets that were on that list that were prioritized, so. It it did serve it, it's not the most user-friendly.
Yeah.
Uh, thing that I've ever looked at, but I'm sure it's could be drastically improved by now.
Needs to be the same company, I, but I mean, there's a number of engineering firms that go out there and do.
Always ask, always ask for a price from the one that has eighty percent of the information already in house, so.
Yeah, cause I'd I'd be interested to see what that dollar amount is. I know it was at a hundred, I mean eighteen million, a hundred and eighty million dollars, so.
Yeah.
I'm sure that's, that number is significantly higher. Um, and I'm just curious to see where some of the roads have fallen in terms of, you know, being, you know, in good shape versus being in disrepair now that Liberty Utilities is digging up. With that, I'm I'm appreciative of you folks coming down and really having the conversation and I think it's an easy conversation that we're all on the same page and and recognize that. More money needs to be just thrown in at the uh repair of our infrastructure, so.
Great.
With that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor, Councilor T. Five, Councilor P. Zone.
My um question, some of my questions were answered, but the only thing, when we talk about repairing a road, like when we did uh Robeson Street. And then two weeks later, there was a cut, like a cross between Wendy's and the Burger King.
Yep.
And people were irate over that. But that was an emergency because of a water pipe that burst.
So most of the time, it's a gas leak or a water leak.
With having equipment sometimes on it.
And I lose sleep when when the permit comes across my desk to open the street. Now, many of them, um, if it's not a dire emergency, we force them to come through the council.
Right.
You know, so if it's, if it's a homeowner that didn't act, cause they wanted to build a house and they didn't bring in new sewer and water before we paved the street, they come before you.
So you know what the problem is with that, Mr. Agia? You give them a permit to build the home.
No, we don't give them a permit to build the home.
Then we had to change that because once the home is built, what is this council gonna say? No, we're not gonna look it up. So that was changed, which was a good thing. But I saw one recently over um by the post office that, and it's only a binder on Bedford Street. I think they thought it was paved, but it's a binder, but there was a hole there, again, it was an emergency.
So this week, if that's the one that you're talking about. So Bedford Street is in binder and what we do about six months before we're going to pave a street, we send out notices to all of the property owners. Alerting them to the fact of this is the procedure. If you need water work, sewer work, curb opening work, deal with it now, because once the final pavement goes down, we're gonna have an issue. So we make sure everybody understands that. So when, usually what we find is when they see binder, that's when we start getting response. They don't listen to the letter, but when they see binder going down, like, oh, we we have to stop moving, that's when the influx comes in. So binder went in, um, what what just happened this week was disconnection of water and sewer to the police station so that they could demolish the building. So that was work that was trying to be done beforehand, but now I can't tell my road contractor, who has a date to start. Please put it off for another two months and he's got that work lined up. So I can't tell LAL Construction, oh, I know I told you July first, we want you to get in there and hit it hard, get through it so that we can get back to school. And then tell them the first week of August, oh, you have to hold off because we need to go open it up. So it is in binder, we make sure that they use the appropriate flowable fill. And that sits, final pavement there won't happen until the spring or early summer. So settlement and all of that things get ironed out and then our contractor, of course, when they do final pavement.
I think that sometimes the public doesn't understand.
I know they don't, yep.
The steps and everything you have to do when we're doing road construction and what a binder is and what the final, you know, pavement is gonna look like. And uh the importance of contacting your office if they want curbs extended, et cetera, before things are done. So for that reason, I'm glad that you came down and there is a lot of road work being done in the city. I wish they did Bedford Street, that ripple effect, I mean Pleasant Street, that ripple effect. We've got police cruisers back and forth there every day, who's gonna be knocking out their their vehicles.
So with with Mr. Deanna under his CDA hat, we've we've been working for the last two years about dealing with Pleasant Street. A lot of Pleasant Street is still contingent upon Paul's drainage resolution problem. And then we'll be able to do that. But there are millions of dollars that have been bonded or appropriated for the reconstruction of Pleasant Street and we've met with it about it multiple times.
Yeah, we're we're in talks right now, we we got um a one point six million dollar grant um from EDI that we're in discussions now with uh with Danny. We don't want to do anything until, you know, water and sewer and stuff like that and a plan is put together.
There's a lot of phases and a lot of work that needs to be done before it's not just call a company, come in and lay tower on the street. There's a lot more that has to be done. My dad was in construction and it was road, so I, I remember going out when they had the balls that you would like with kerosene, you'd have to, you know. So it's been quite a while, um, you know, so.
For my time.
I, yeah, well, I know, you know, a little bit about that, that it does take, it does take a while. And when we redo a street like we did Stafford Road, now people think that's a highway.
I know.
So, you know, then.
Different problem, different office.
The street's not done, we fixed the street, then people call, there's complaints that the traffic is going too fast. So we do the best we can. But again, thank you for coming down because I think you laid it out and I agree, we should put some of our own money, not just state money into it. Thank you all.
Appreciate it.
I yield, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor, Councilor T. Two, Councilor D. Young.
Hi, good evening. Yeah, actually, I'm I'm very glad that that this conversation was had as well. Especially, I have to say, with Columbia Street. It's my understanding that in the last couple of days, perhaps, somebody was really complaining about Columbia Street and the city not doing their job and. You know, the city council is always lacking at something. Um, so I think it's good that people know that we did appropriate the money already a couple of years ago. It's important people, for people to realize that that street is gonna be redone and it's to the tune of two million dollars. So we're not talking a paver is lifted and we can just send somebody out and pay them a hundred bucks to fix it. It's, we're talking multimillion dollar projects. So just so people are aware of, yes, this is being taken and the money has already been appropriated. And 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 I think that's why it's worthwhile for people to watch meetings, cause they really could, they learn a lot. I only have a question. Globe Mills Avenue, that curve.
Which one?
Globe Mills Avenue, the curve on Bay Street?
That's been, that's been awarded, it's a century paving, so it should be done within the next two weeks. We made sure we followed the appropriate procurement. It was awarded twenty-five thousand dollars just to patch that one little section of asphalt. But that work has been already awarded and should be done. I ask for it to be done by the middle of August, so I'm expecting to see it done relatively quickly.
Okay, um, I hope so, cause I think I asked about maybe two months ago or longer and it was through thirty to forty-five days.
But but there is a process, right?
No, no, I get that, I get that.
I don't just hand out contracts to contractors to go fix things. We go through the procurement process, Rebecca was great to deal with, we make sure we dot every I, cross every T. And we've done that.
No, I know you do and I'm being a little facetious, but.
I understand.
No, I know, you, I'll tell you, I have nothing ever but praise for you, you you are phenomenal in what you do. I just wanted to ask because people are asking me, so.
You can have them call me. You know I won't run from a phone call.
Thank you, with that, I yield.
All right.
Thank you, Councilor, Councilor C. Four, Councilor K. B.
Yes, just a couple of quick questions. Well, first of all, congratulations, Ms. Deanna, on your, your new role.
Thank you.
Your level of competence, in my opinion, is tremendous, uh, so. It's a, congratulations, I don't know if you wanted it or not, but. Uh, Ms. Agia, I I agree with your level of competence as well, I mean, it's very impressive, I always have been impressed with you. So the only question I have is um the intersection, you said, you know, you negotiated the intersection of at uh Robeson Street.
With the gas company to get them to take that out of order so that they could be through and out of our way.
Okay, so that that's, that's a great, the the intersection at the top of Columbia, Ms. Agia. Is that included in this?
So, yes, so all of, so you just saw DCM went out and just did some temporary patches over a couple of things, maybe just before the Fourth of July. So that entire intersection completely reconstructed, new sidewalks, all new pavement, about a hundred feet in each direction of South Main Street. The signals Chris Hathaway was comfortable with, re-timing, with some restriping to make some of the maneuvers better through that, so that the signals can stay. But everything else is new curbing, new sidewalk, new handicap ramps, um, so that entire intersection will be reconstructed. Uh, reconstructed, but the signalization was adequate for what.
I know I've had some private conversations with uh Council Tith uh with regard to that intersection and that was an important item for for him as well. But we've been getting a lot of uh calls on that, I'm glad that's included. So um, I, thank you for all you do, now you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilor, Councilor C. Three, Councilor Hart.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Dan, um, just a few, a few things, um, real quickly, the Bedford and Robeson, that's underway, correct, right now? And that is, that is the project where we're gonna be able to take a left coming from um Ruggles Park down Bedford, take a left on Bedford.
That's correct.
On Bedford, on Robeson, take a left on Bedford.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, the other one too is, and I talked to you about this a week, maybe a week and a half ago, two weeks. The intersection at Ellsbury and President Avenue.
Yes.
Coming from um Robeson Street, you come to the uh the lights and there's the two lanes.
And as you're approaching the the rotary.
There's a race to the rotary.
Yep.
And it becomes a little, little dangerous. I know it's not, that's not on here at all, but is that in the?
So the conversation that we had and that I followed up with was with Stephanie McArthur from the traffic department. She handles all of the striping and we had gone back and looked historically, what was the striping there? Cause right now it's a little bit like the Wild West, like you you stated with the race. So she has in her work schedule to put the striping that was previously there, which is a little bit more restrictive and directs people to where they need to be. So I would expect to see something done. Usually all of the striping gets done by the end of October before things get too cold, so I would anticipate seeing some updated changes there as well.
All right, but but as far as your department, is there anything that you can do to make that a little bit more safer?
Well, just, just painting the appropriate lines on the ground is a start, so that, that's the cheapest start.
Okay.
Um, some of that jurisdiction actually falls in Mass DOT around the rotary. So if if we make wholesale changes about lane widths, um, number of lanes, sometimes we have to involve them with the approach to the rotary. What happens too is. Rotaries, and they're they're coming back, they're like, they they want us, they almost want them to put one down in Somerset, right? So I thought rotaries were banned in Massachusetts for a number of years, but apparently they're back. And the problem being is that in many instances, rotaries are two lanes, two lanes entering. Sometimes they're only one. So this is a location where, well, what is it? Is it two lanes or is it one? And if you don't have the right lines painted on the ground, people think it's one, so that's why there's there's a race. So if you actually had distinct lanes painted for the appropriate widths and the right arrows, then people could make some decisions about how to get around that rotary. They just made incredible, if you exit the industrial park, head down Airport Road to go towards that rotary. Just what they did in striping there over the last year, with the right-hand lane is dedicated only to get back to the highway. So just paint and signage has cleared up all of the traffic issues that the industrial park had through that street. I can't take credit for all of it, cause that was Mass DOT.
Right.
That we had to bring in, but through that partnership, we were able to make drastic improvements.
That's a good start, the the lining down and everything. And also too, the last thing, um, and again, it might not be in your ballpark, but the last meeting, we talked about the speed bumps.
Yes.
Uh, did that funding go through and is it gonna be for this?
Yes, so there, the first, the first series of speed bumps have been ordered, it was like a thirty-day delivery. I was out for two weeks, but we just have the conversation Monday with Stephanie and the mayor and myself. Rigginback Road is the first location that they'll be installed and there's a series of about five or six locations that we're looking at. Because of the different types of products, we wanted to start with one street and what we've done is a speed table, not a speed bump. So they're a little bit wider, a little bit flatter, especially up there, so that trucks can navigate that rather than a bump and load shifting in the backs of the trucks. So we're gonna see how that works, but I do know there was most recently, I guess, some other real bad speeding stuff happening up on Rigginback and then into Innovation Way. So that's where the first one should be put in place, I would assume, within days of us receiving it.
Okay, and and nothing yet from for the schools for the start of the school year?
No, nothing yet, nope.
Okay, we're gonna start with that first, all right, thank you, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor, C. One, do you have a follow-up question?
I do, just one question. Uh, so timeline, any anticipated timeline or?
For, for this conversation?
Yeah.
What I would say is, I would think next fiscal year, because I don't want you to appropriate money and we're not ready to spend it. So the construction of these streets actually takes less time than the planning, the bid documents and all of that background work. So if we were to be able to anticipate an increased funding for fiscal twenty-seven. One, that gives the administration time to figure out, can we put any of this in the budget? Two, are we gonna bond out for it? And then it also gives me a direction of, okay, next year I can anticipate spending five million dollars. So now, what I anticipate in a five million dollars a year is being able to do a big project, like Pleasant Street, for instance. Even Pleasant Street from from this building to Plymouth Avenue, that's a big project. That's probably three or four million dollars in its own, just just that, the width, the sidewalks, the curbs. So this increased funding will allow us to do bigger projects where those just sit forever. Brayton Avenue, right, Eastern Avenue, I'm working with Mass DOT now, we're trying to get them to pick up the dime for the entire reconstruction of Eastern Avenue. But those things take time. So knowing that I have greater funding, then we can start looking at some of the bigger projects and some of the smaller ones. If if the bonding wasn't in place for Columbia or Bedford, we wouldn't get both of these done this year. Maybe you'd get one and you'd get no other streets, right? Columbia's two point two or whatever it is, if we get one point eight, I have to save money for two years to go do Columbia Street and nothing else. So between some opera money, so if you look at our awards, we've utilized opera funding money. We we utilize CDA money and for a number of years, we're doing streets, but now that funding source is drying up.
And to some extent.
Chapter ninety monies, some of those suffer that and then your, we were, I I kind of fell upon the Streetscapes money. When I walked in the door, nobody told me, hey, there's three million dollars worth of Streetscapes money that nobody's spent yet. So over time, we get the finance team be be before Emily's time to agree, yes, you can spend some of that. Because it's not, you can't just throw on the administration, hey, I want you to go borrow that three million, figure out how you're gonna pay for it. So we have those discussions as well. So they've they've allowed me to spend those dollars over the last year or two and that now that funding source is drying up. So I think the preliminary conversation. So, I think the preliminary conversation is great, I honestly don't see the need, because we do have increased funding for this year, I think twenty-seven, we're already halfway through twenty-six, uh, fiscal year.
Right.
Um, I would think in the budget for twenty-seven.
Not quite halfway, but...
For paving, we are.
Yeah, well, that's it, so I only have a small construction.
So, I guess, uh, for timeframe standpoint, so we, we probably get our, um, chapter ninety allotment from Mass DOT in April, May, so you'd be looking?
We usually get it, it's, it's really not, we don't get it until the budget's passed.
Right, right.
But, we know what the numbers, so if, if everything stays the way it is now and, and her five-year plan, we should be getting two point six at a minimum every year.
But, we, we don't know if there's gonna be any changes or adjustments based on, you know, federal monies, things of that nature, so...
No idea, no idea.
Um, so, I, I guess from that standpoint, is it safe to say that probably in the April, May timeframe, that the administration probably come down for a bond authorization at, at that point?
I don't know how long those things take, so I can't answer that question.
So, it, it'll be part of the capital plan, is the conversation that we've been having in general, um, and I think a bigger part of the conversation that I think I've been having with you and, and the rest of the council, with the capital plan is that it needs to include a funding plan to an extent with it. So, we are gonna get the money in there, in the capital plan for around the five million dollars each year and then throughout time, we'll work on what is in there and where it's actually coming in. So, as we get appropriations in or whatnot, we'll know if we're coming down with free cash requests or if we're coming down with bond authorizations at that point. So, I think the commitment for right now is just, we will come down with something whenever we know exactly how much we need and make sure that it's gonna continue to move forward regardless.
So, I'm looking, I'm tired of just, and, and it's not directed to you, but I'm just tired of saying we're gonna come down, we're gonna come down. So, I'm, I'm looking for a timeframe, right, and, and whether it's a month or two months, that's fine, but I've now created an action item folder that I'm gonna keep right here, so that I can constantly, at every single meeting, review what we need to do. So, all I'm simply looking for is when, I guess, if, if it's capital items, that's fine, but, um, when can I expect, I guess, the capital items? And I guess to Mr. Aguirre's point, I don't wanna go on a tangent, we appropriated three million dollars for Streetscape, so we said we wanted road to be repaired. Um, so the statement that, you know, we don't wanna throw it on the administration to figure out how to be paid for, it came down to the council, there should have been a plan, right? So, from the council's standpoint, we appropriated the money and the money is sitting there. So, that is three million dollars that should have been spent, I think, five years ago now, um, and I forget the exact, right, the, oh...
And it's, and it's really doing half of what it was intended to do because of the timeframe.
Time sentence, but, uh, it's, it's probably, uh, you know, five years.
It, it also wasn't appropriated, it was authorized. So, that's the difference with that too, it wasn't fully appropriated, it was only authorized, and I agree that there should be a funding plan for that authorization, but...
Yeah, but why, why would you come down to the council asking for an authorization if there's no?
You're gonna have to ask like six years ago for that one, so I don't know.
I, I can promise you that by March, I'll be knocking on doors, one floor above me and then this one as well, figuring out how we're gonna spend five million dollars on streets this year.
So, Dan, if Dan is saying, uh, FY two thou, uh, twenty-seven, we'll make sure we're ready for when he's, when he's ready to do it.
Okay, alright.
You won't, we won't sit on any money going forward.
So, timeline on capital, do we know? When do you anticipate that?
A capital plan, um...
I need a date, I know, just give me a month, give me, give me something.
I, um, I don't have one right now, I, the timelines that we had in place have kinda shifted, um, with roles shifting around here, so I, it...
So, I'm gonna go back to the administration then, so when, when can I expect an authorization coming down for these streets? I, I won't, listen, I'm not, I'm not gonna stop this conversation until I get a, a response, because I wanna write down what the commitment is.
But, you're at, you're, you're asking about the entire capital plan, not just streets.
No, no, I'm asking about your, I, I was just told that your, to, in order to get to five million dollars, we need to get at least free cash, uh, bond authorization, whatever the case may be. It was then tied into a capital plan, so I'm asking when we're gonna get the capital plan, all I care about is, how am I getting you the money? So, in FY twenty-seven, you've got five million dollars between chapter ninety and an additional appropriation to do our infrastructure.
Can they get back to us at the next meeting with a timeframe, so we'll put it in place then, and it's unfair to ask them to do it right now at this moment in time. So, let them, give them a couple of weeks, let them come back to us and give us a time of when it's gonna be all being fair.
I disagree it was unfair, I mean, we, we filed this two weeks ago, so, or a month ago, a month ago, we, we've only been meeting, in the summer, we meet a month, so it was out there.
I understand, now you're asking for a timeframe, none of them prepared to give you one, so, I mean, what do we do?
Well, I, I, I'm not, I'm not gonna, here it is, be resolved that the Florida City Council hereby request that the Committee on Finance, the Director of Engineering and Planning, the City Administration, meet to develop and present a comprehensive funding strategy to match or supplement the city's annual chapter ninety allocation, with the goal of significantly increasing investment in roadway improvements and addressing the approximately one hundred and eighty million dollar backlog identified in the Pavement Management Report. Again, filed July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, so the, the intent was always we were gonna have a response.
I hear you, Councilor, but I mean, I don't know if they're gonna really give a timeframe right now.
A capital plan in general, once we put it out to the departments and start that process, to have it to a point that it is able to be submitted to council is probably about six weeks. To have a full capital plan in front of you at that point. The capital plan, again, will have funding, I'm gonna say options identified, it may not have everything, obviously, it's a five-year plan, it's not gonna be perfectly ironed out, so it'll, it'll come from that point in time. The timing of the bond authorizations is when they're needed, what do you think? We can't anticipate that yet.
Yeah.
One at a time, please, Councilor.
You'll, you'll have a capital plan sometime in November, December.
Let's say a Christmas gift, how's that?
It'll be before Christmas.
It'll even be probably before that, but you'll...
I will, I will put December.
You'll have, put November, Councilor.
I don't know, I'm giving you, I'm giving you an extra month, December.
Seeing I started yesterday?
He's very ambitious, I mean, it's his second day.
December, alright, thank you, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor, I just wanna ask a quick question, um, Mr. Aguirre, the intersection of Langley Street and Ellsbury Street, there's two double yellow lines coming...
Which street is it, I'm sorry?
Ellsbury Street and Langley Street, next to the, next to Community College.
Yep.
The lines don't meet, they're like, if you're driving, if you're hugging the two double lines going north and south, you will get into a collision, the front cords will hit.
So, I'll speak to Stephanie about it, normally the reason why the double yellows don't line up, it's if parking is allowed on one side.
There's no parking.
I will look at it and I'll give you a call tomorrow with my answer.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I don't wanna drag this meeting out any longer. You guys are staying?
I wanna thank you all for coming down, congratulations to you, Mr. Dean, for your new role and thanks for explaining everything, thank you. Awesome, um, we'll move on to, thank you, Mr. Aguirre. Move on to item number three, fiscal year twenty twenty-five quarterly of... Excuse me, excuse me, there's no talking to the council in meetings.
Looking for a key.
No talking.
He's looking for his key.
I don't know if I left it at the table, I didn't wanna interrupt the meeting, we just kinda had a moment. Is there a key, thank you?
No.
Is there a motion at table?
Motion at table.
Motion at table, it's made in second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Item number three, fiscal year twenty twenty-five quarter for budget report, referred on seven fifteen, twenty twenty-five, all discussions, Councilor C two, Councilor Dean.
Okay. So, I will start with actuals, um, under city administrator, salaries. If you, I guess for this one, we need to go to expenses, um, ch-ch-ch-ch-ch, city expenses, page three. City administrator, a hundred and twelve percent, uh, a hundred and eighty-three thousand, uh, retirement buyout, forty-nine thousand five, two oh five three seventy-seven. So, obviously, the city administrator was paid out and I'd like to know the explanation for that.
Um, I thought that we sent the buyout to council, I think, back in May, um, I can find that again and forward it again, I know it was sent out to at least a counselor. So, it's from the time that he had on the books, there was several weeks of vacation, we get the vacation deposits in January, so he had almost a full year's vacation to be paid out. There's sick time that gets paid out, there's personal days that get paid out, so what you're seeing there is the payout for the time on the books that he had before leaving.
So, did he get his full salary plus the sick time, the personal time, et cetera, et cetera? Or did he only get paid up until the time that he left and then those numbers added up to that dollar?
So, so the retirement buyout alone is exclusively the time on the books that needs to be paid out. It's nothing to do with the salary or additional weeks of pay or anything like that, that buyout number is exclusively vacation, sick, personal time. So, the, the breakout that we had emailed out, I'll find it and, and make sure that you get a copy of it, but it breaks out any pay that was paid out at the end. Um, but that buyout specifically, that forty-nine thousand is exclusively for vacation time and sick and personal.
Okay, and then on page four is basically the same question with the Director of Finance, um, that ended up being paid, that was a hundred and twenty-four percent. Again, it's showing the retirement buyout, forty-five thousand four seventy-six, um...
Unfortunately, it's the same thing, because they left her on the same time, again, the deposit had happened early January, um, or in January and, and, um, she left almost two months later. So, again, it was a, almost a full year's of vacation time that was on the books, um, as well as the personal days, again, that we get at that time. So, essentially, all of the time off that each of these two employees happen to get each year had been bought out. Um, and then the other reason that it's so over was because, um, when I was pulled out of my position to backfill, I was paid out of there. So, if you look at the salary line for, um, the position that I was in, there's about a forty-five thousand dollar surplus.
Okay, um, so if we go back to the actuals, I'm sorry, but, um, on the second, I guess it's the same, under the assessors, it shows a hundred and one percent, um, it's not a lot, but it's over budget. Um, salaries in the auditors department, a hundred and two percent, um...
So, with, um, assessors specifically, I can tell you that, um, uh, the majority of it was from, um, somebody that had time out of the office and there was overtime that needed to be paid to backfill, um, a long-term medical out. So, um, it's about three thousand, I think that one is four thousand dollars total over, so the three thousand is, um, overtime and then there's about a thousand dollar from a salary increase that was given to the, um, assessor. Um, and then auditors is not the same thing, but the same thing, it was for increase, um, to the auditor's salary and some of the other staff member's salaries at that, in that department. And I believe there might be a buyout in that one as well, I'm not sure, uh, no, nevermind, no, it wasn't, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
And on the next page, for the school crossing guards, it was a hundred and six percent, forty-one thousand dollars more, um, that comes from?
Sorry, yeah.
That's from the problem?
Um, it was, the, the budget was undershot, um, in some ways that we were factoring in for the schools and not for the number of schools that needed double positions and then for the charter, not Fall River Public Schools that we've been, um, having crossing guards at. So, that was a big part of that, it's, it's been corrected moving forward, I don't know how else to say that.
So, the budget was underfunded, is the basic?
It was, it was under-asked, I, I should say underfunded, but we put forward a budget that wasn't sufficient and it was a, I'm gonna say a mistake that was made in that sense. We didn't come back down for a, um, request to make any changes, because within that block group, we had enough surplus to, to make up the difference. So, it's not a deficit in that sense, it's just within that department that you're seeing listed, but within that block group and to the appropriation, where there's not an actual deficit.
And on the, under priority matters, on, on to your agenda, you'll see that the, um, there's a, 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 a...
Request for this, yes.
You know, we're going to revamp that whole crossing guard situation with the school department, um, probably have the school department take it over, um, so we're working on that.
So...
Not the budget, not the budget, not the budget.
We're not putting the budget on the city school side.
We cannot.
No, no, it won't be, it won't be in one, it'll be the actual physical working, but we're working on that.
Okay, um, so, let's see, other insurance, this would be two pages if you flip the page, um, a hundred and six percent, ninety-eight thousand dollars more, this other insurance is what?
Um, I think that you are looking at the original one and I was looking at the updated one, I'm sorry, um, other insurance.
At the top of the page is Health and Human Services?
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I...
Also forty thousand dollars over budget.
So, we sent, we sent an updated, um, sheet, so the, the part of the conversation and why we had sent updated pages, um, I think on Friday, maybe yesterday, was because the timing of when this report is pulled to now is a dramatic difference, because it's year-end and because there's a lot of, I'm gonna say auditing that gets done within this. So, um, if you look at the updated pages that we had sent out, that other insurance had expenses in it that didn't belong there. So, when we, I'm gonna say fixed displaying it, it's not in a deficit in that item, it was not overspent, it's actually underspent by about that same amount, by two hundred and eighty thousand dollars for other insurance.
So, instead of being under by forty?
You, over.
I mean, instead of being over by forty thousand, we're under by two hundred thousand, is that what you just said?
Yeah.
That's quite a swing.
It, again, it's, it's not, if you look in total, it didn't change that much, it's, it was just the display or organization of the items, I don't know how else to say that without giving an accounting lesson that I was told not to give. It was supposed to be in another line item and you can see it there now in total, it's where it belongs.
Okay, great. Now, I also have the update, um, I do have the update, so...
Point of order, point of order.
Councilor C five, Councilor Hart.
Can we get a clarification, that wasn't done, but I was told not to give that, we're the council, you can give us information.
That's not what I, I'm sorry, that's not what I was saying, I was just saying I didn't wanna get too into the weeds of the technical side of how money moved with accounting, but it's, it's all, I mean...
She didn't wanna give you an accounting lesson.
Yeah. I didn't wanna give an accounting lesson, that's what I was told not to do.
Okay, alright.
Keep on, be sure.
I'm happy to, if, if anybody wants one, I'm happy, I'm happy to provide.
So, the enterprise accounts, so in the water, uh, the water enterprise, they have a, at the end of the year, a surplus of six hundred and sixty-nine thousand eight sixty-four. And, um, well, actually, it's not, I'm sorry, that was the old number, the new number, I'm sorry, my error, three hundred eighty-three thousand sixty dollars. And in the sewer department, we have a surplus of two million eighty-one thousand five fifty-four. So, we're looking at basically two point four million dollars, um, in surplus money. So, I guess this is more of a question than anything, so if we have two point four million dollars in surplus money, why did we even have to have a conversation about raising water and sewer rates?
So, I can tell you one of the, the, I'm gonna say the quick, easiest answers with this is there's a million dollars alone that was anticipated to be taken out in debt this year, that wasn't taken out on the timeframe that we were told, so the state actually issues that debt. Um, we, we borrow through them with the, um, Mass Clean Water Trust, um, and so we were told that we were gonna have to start making those debt payments this year and that didn't come through. So, a loan in sewer, there's about a million dollars that wasn't paid out in debt that we anticipated to be paid out, so that will be paid out now, moving forward, and it'll just be pushed out a year. So, we will use that money for what it was intended for, just a year off cycle, so that part of it is, is within that. The other side of it is, you know, we've, we've always had some of that, you know, up and down of what the expenses come into, to what the revenues land at. A lot of times, our revenues fall extraordinarily short with people paying their bills on time and, and in a way that we anticipate and that we bill them to be paid, and if you look at the numbers for the sewer department this year, this is probably the first time in a very, very, very long time that we've hit a hundred percent of anticipated revenues, um, which is great. We'll take that and use it to do capital, to pay down debt and to work on those projects moving forward. So, any of these, um, amounts get certified as free cash and we turn around and, and try and put it into, you know, capital plans in the future that we have coming up and that we already have planned, so that less money is taken out.
So, the one, so if you take out that million, that, we have to pay the state, so the one point four million is, is gonna be targeted for things like capital plans, et cetera?
Yes.
Capital plans within the water and sewer department?
Yes, within water and sewer exclusively, exclusively.
Okay, EM, uh, whoop, that's back, EMS, we have a surplus of one million dollars after all expenses.
Yes, um, that, I mean, that's, uh, I'm gonna say a success from EMS and the programs that they've added in and the additional, um, non-emergent runs that they've added in, they've been able to increase their revenues. I think we came down last year, um, a couple of times for different appropriations to increase it, because we knew that the work that was being done was going to increase it, it just, I'm gonna say luckily increased it... It just, I'm gonna say luckily increased it even more than we expected. So, again, it's something that's going to go towards the capital needs that they have there, but it's also, their expenses have increased to go with it. So if you look at, you know, what their expenses are and what their expenses are, you know, for the twenty-six budget, you'll see that these revenues are where they need to be to continue to operate the way they have been.
But also, at the same token, we haven't realized yet, and we won't probably until the end of the fiscal year, the increase of one million, one-point-two million with the new contract with St. Anne's.
So, right, so one of the contracts...
That's not in here.
Correct, one of the contracts started last October, and then another one is starting, I think, around now.
Yeah.
Yep. So, so one of them was starting to be realized already, and that's part of what you're seeing. And then the other one, you're right, there will be continued increases.
July twenty-second is when they stop.
Yeah, and obviously, you're not gonna realize the impact of that until you have a full year into it, but it's gonna be significant, for sure. I had one more, so one thing about the marijuana, money for marijuana was exceeded the projected amount by five-hundred thousand dollars?
Yes.
Okay, and that money is targeted for what?
It just goes into our free cash certification. So that plan of what I'm gonna say is targeted for will come down before you. As soon as we have a free cash certification, we'll, you know, share that amount with you and from there, start discussing plans to expend or reserve that money at that point in time.
Okay, thank you. Glad I helped.
Thank you, Council. Before we call next council, I just want to let people that will hear, the top ten students from DIF, waiting to get their citation. A regular city council meeting usually starts at seven o'clock, or after finance. We're in the middle of finance, there's this item, and then there's one more item after this. After that, we'll begin a regular city council meeting, and you can come down for your citations. Just so you'll know, I don't want you sitting here wondering how long this will take. Sometimes government moves slowly, and sometimes we're fortunate we didn't get an accounting lesson right now, because it'd probably be a lot longer. Council seat seven, Council proposal.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, first question is on local receipts, and it's on the charter tuition reimbursement, which came out lower than the revised budget was.
Are you talking about cherry sheet, I'm sorry?
Yes.
Correct, that's, that's completely with the state. They estimate the cherry sheet amounts, they provide all of that to us, we have zero, say, in any of it. And then it's really, it's literally based on charter tuition reimbursements that they give us. So if enrollment comes in differently than what they anticipate, the number changes. There's an offset side, too, that our expenses with the cherry sheet also shift the same way.
Correct, so I guess my question is, the original budget was closer to the actual than the revised was?
That's, again, they, they give us that original number, so the governor sends down, there's actually three, three iterations before the final one. So that's the governor, the House, the Senate. And then the final one comes through. So the time of the original budget is usually the governor's. And then the revised one is, once it's been fully approved, we adjust it at tax rate recap, again, per the state requirements and standards. It's not a choice that we make, it's nothing that we come down for, they just tell us to adjust it. So that's their, their estimates being very different.
That's fine. Toward the bottom is the investment income. So I guess the question I have, have we realized the full return on that investment at this point?
What do you...
Does that number just has continued to grow?
Yeah, no, this is the final number, yes. This is about, I'm not gonna say this is unaudited, so we're not, we're never done till we're done, but this is a ninety-five percent confident done number. It should not change much from this.
Okay. Can you, can you speak to the miscellaneous line? That is, the original budget of one-fifty went to four-twenty-seven-three-ten.
So, the miscellaneous line is, there's two different line items that make it up. It's a miscellaneous reoccurring and a miscellaneous non-reoccurring. So the miscellaneous reoccurring is when we do supplemental tax bills for changes that happen outside of a certain time period of us doing our bills. Assessors could speak to you way more clearly about this, but without getting too technical. That's usually about fifty thousand a year that we kind of have been getting the last several years. So part of that fifty thousand is baked into this. The other side of it is literally miscellaneous non-reoccurring. It's, it's a catch-all for anything else that we happen to be getting. I know there's something that, it's not in this number, but we just received money from the state for unclaimed property and in taxes that we got for about three-hundred thousand dollars. So stuff like that ends up in this, that it's not, you know, a regular item that comes in. It's not something that people are typically paying for. But if there's any money that, you know, we get that we weren't anticipating, and that isn't a regular fee that we charge, it would go into that line item. So I could get a more detailed breakout of it, but just, just know it's going to be very random.
That's fine, if you could get that breakout, that'd be great. To the inactive capital projects, something that I think the council talks about all too often. This list is getting smaller, we still have about two-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand dollars idly. Any plans on that in initial conversations, Sadia? I'll go to you first.
We've had some, we've had some discussions with the, in the administration concerning looking at some park projects, redoing some use of that money for increases in changes to our basketball courts, tennis courts, pickleball courts. We talked about the designing of a EMS storage business, which you'll see tonight. We think we probably will have that money freed up for another, something else. There's some improvements that we're doing right now at the fire department that you are well aware of. So we're talking about those projects and seeing what the best way to go forward with those are.
Okay. Particularly the two-hundred-and-four-thousand streets and highways. Obviously, that's the sticking number that's of that larger picture. So, any plans with that particular?
The, the goal would be to put it towards its original intent and to keep it within that, so...
By any particular plan with that, yet?
Haven't yet, no.
Okay. Can we go to the insurance piece? Obviously, there was pretty decent change from the original book to the revised that you sent to us. So Emily, I don't know if you can walk us through what has changed, and then kind of a general sense of where we stand after we talked a little bit about that during budget season?
Yes, sorry, I just couldn't find my tab. So, this is again, I, I want to point out the original submission of the quarter four book to the updated one that I provided you within the last day or so. It's, it's something with, especially with this trust fund and the way these bills work, we are very, very behind at all times. It's just the way the healthcare industry works with the billing and the receipts and all of that. So this number is going to continue to shift. This is one that I can tell you, you know, when you're asking about how, how done the investment income is, this one is not done. We are not necessarily going to hit that two-point-six million that we were hoping for at the end of the year fund balance, because we did have, of course, May and June, bills come in higher than expected, even above the one-oh-four percent that we had talked through. It came up to, I think it was about one-oh-seven or one-oh-eight in the final percentage. So we did take a little bit more of a hit in that than we anticipated, but receipts are still coming in. I mean, I tried to update this sheet for a week and a half, and every time I went in, it changed again. So we are still just continuing to collect on those receipts at this point. And then the expenses are kind of done at this point, it's really the receipts that were still... We know more stop-loss reimbursements coming in, we know more rebates will come in. And we have up until, I want to say September thirtieth, to have them accounted for in this.
Okay. I, I guess my larger question, of course, is, in the original binder, we were at an ending fund balance deficit, and now we're in the positive. Is it your thought that that's gonna continue to grow at this point?
Yes, and again, how substantially, I don't, I don't wanna...
It's hard to say.
I don't wanna go out on a limb with that, but it will only continue.
So by September, you'll be able to tell us where that exactly stands?
Correct, at that point, that's when our cutoff is from the state, to be able to still consider something for the previous fiscal year within this fund. So at that point in time, we'll have a better number, and I will make sure to share that with you.
Okay. And then last question, do you have a sense, ballpark idea, how much surplus we may have that could be forward for certification?
I am trying to answer this without getting technical. That is very hard to say. So the first basis of, I'm gonna say, free cash that people understand and that they expect is whatever the prior year's budget was, whatever, you know, we came in over in revenues and what we came in under in expenses, if you add and subtract, it should be that number. Unfortunately, there is a lot more that goes into that. There's a fund balance that already existed before this fiscal year. And then there are things that we are required to, I'm gonna say, set aside money for, reserve some of that fund balance for. So to give you a number, you know...
Would be hard.
It's hard. We are looking, I'm gonna say, we, we should easily be over ten million dollars, but that's about all I can give you.
That's fair. And again, just to follow up on the last question, when do you think you will have a better idea of what that looks like?
Our goal is to have it certified. We close our books officially September thirtieth, per the state. With all of that, our goal would be to have our free cash, I'm gonna say calculated, not necessarily certified, but calculated and kind of submitted, which would have a much better estimate by the end of October. So official certification, we typically get it in November.
So it probably could go in line with the development of the capital plan then?
That's the goal.
Yep. In line with what Council Kadeem was asking about.
The goal, yes.
Good. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Council. Council seat one, Council Kadeem.
Thank you, I'll, I'll be quick, I just got a couple of questions. So the first is just on the police expense SRO. The original quarterly report had salaries in a deficit of almost half a million dollars, and then I think it was, based on the new report that you submitted, it's close to about a quarter of a million?
Correct. The biggest thing with that is the dispatchers that EMS pays for. They pay for five dispatchers, as dispatches held completely in police and is paid for other places. So that came through. The other thing is the SROs were part of that as well. So the SRO payments, they just, I mean, they don't come every two weeks when we get paid. So those deposits needed to be made as well. So we were just kind of behind in logging what needed to be logged into these accounts.
Yeah, so on the reimbursement, so, so what was driving the two-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand-dollar deficit in salaries?
Buyouts mostly, because they don't budget, we don't budget for buyouts in police, yep. And then the other side of it is overtime, which I think we discussed at length in the budget hearings of how that is going to shift moving forward.
And then, just shifting gears to the capital projects, I know my colleague in seat seven had talked about the inactive projects. So it's just good to hear that the administration is looking at the inactive projects and spending down the, the items. However, just in terms of, I just noticed on the backside, there are some significant deficits. And I know with the school projects themselves, it's just, I think they're waiting for some MSBA reimbursements. I'm hoping that that
Yes.
is still out there, and it's not a true deficit. But over on sewer, there's a two-point-three-million-dollar deficit?
So that's also not real, we've been working through that one. There's something within those projects that you see there, the couple that are grouped together that I'm gonna say is not right in the system that we're, that we're sorting through. Something with either the way the revenues came in or the expenses went in. And then part of it could also be the Mass Clean Water Trust issuance of debt, but I know that part of it was the, the mix of projects that landed in there.
So can we, we should be, so the first quarter budget review, we should be able to see that?
Yes, clean up.
More accurate picture of where we stand?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. With that, I yields.
Thank you, Council. There be no further questions. Well, thank you very much for coming down and answering the questions. Thanks for skipping the tutorial on accounting. With those kind of numbers, I'm kind of glad you did. Next. The final item in finance, in the court provisions, chapter forty-four, section thirty-two of the Massachusetts General Laws, I recommend to file appropriation to your honorable body that the sum of two-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand being the same is hereby appropriated to EMS expenses from EMS revenues. Any questions?
No.
I've got, I've got...
Council seat one, Council Kadeem.
So, uh...
Do you want Beth to come down?
I guess, can we just get a, an update for us?
Yeah, she has an update on her, too. We spent some time on it today and yesterday. Can you, Beth, do you have an, to give them...
I prepared some...
Yeah.
Beth, could you please speak into the microphone and tell the public who you are? Because I know we know who you are, but people might not know who you are.
Hi, my name is Beth Fauntz, I'm the chief of EMS.
Try speaking into the microphone a little bit louder, put it closer to you.
Push the microphone.
There you go.
My name is Beth Fauntz, I'm the chief of EMS. I have prepared some documents with some pictures, if you'd like me to show them and give you the information in regard to this conversation? So as you're all aware, we just, September twenty-second, we took over, we're gonna be the primary provider of the interfacility transfers out of Brown Health. We, last year in October, started with a contract with South Coast Health to do the primary interfacility transfers out of Charlton, and where the secondary contact for transfers out of St. Luke's Hospital. It's been lucrative, we did have to put some money into the business to try to accommodate those contracts. The contract started in October, we didn't even see a full year of revenues and profits from that contract. We did reach out to Brown Health, and we started with them on July twenty-second. The South Coast Hospital Group is much busier than the Brown Health contract. But as you can see, the numbers over the year have gone from... We started this, I gave you the five-year comparison, that's on the third page. So we started with a thousand, a thousand-six-hundred, one-thousand-six-hundred runs in twenty-twenty-two, and we were anticipated to do ten-thousand-eight-hundred in twenty-twenty-six. We have put money into the transfer business in a, in a fiscally responsible manner. Last year, we were able to, with our free cash, pay off some of the leases that we had early so that we could take care of the St. Anne's agreement in a fiscally responsible manner and be able to bring on the two new trucks we needed to be able to fulfill this contract. So we put out an RFP for some garage space and for some living quarters for our crews, because our trucks are currently in the stations double-stacked. And it becomes a problem that we have to ask trucks to move in order for our trucks to get out to respond to calls, and that creates a delay in sometimes. And it, if it's in the middle of the night, we have to wake up an engine company or somebody to be able to move a truck out, to let our trucks out, and it becomes inconvenient. We do have a very diverse group, but it's very female-heavy. So we've ended up sometimes at the center station with having to sleep with five females in a dorm that should be accommodating two. We are now running eight trucks at all times, sometimes ten during the day. And in instances where, like we had the recent fire, we were able to have those number of ambulances respond and backup our nine-one-one providers. We, they're an ambulance, they're certified as an ambulance, and they're able to do dual roles, so they don't just, they're not just able to do IFT, they're able to cut down on the mutual aid and help us to take care of our city needs also. So the anticipated revenue increase from this contract should be, in essence, about two million dollars. EMS's goal is not to take over the world. Our goal was to be able to take care of our own city and to be able to keep the revenue within the city confines and rather than giving money to, to for-profit services. So what we do is, our goal was to take over the contracts at Charlton and South Coast, be able to provide an excellent, excellent service for the city of Fall River and the citizens of Fall River. And I think we've, we've done that. We're in the middle of building our at-home visit, which is the future of EMS. We're in negotiations with both South Coast Hospital Groups and St. Anne's Hospital Group in trying to work on a funding model, which has been a struggle in the state. Because the profit, the, it benefits the insurance companies in trying to get them to give you the money back, is, you know, they wanted to, you know, it's kind of difficult. But we did a, a one-year grant through the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and they gave us a one-year grant to run our MIH program, and South Coast Hospital Group found that very profitable for them with the program, and we got rave reviews. I have great providers, we will... And we got rave reviews. I have great providers. We're willing to continue moving forward. I just need some space in order for our guys to be able to, um, our employees to be able to work in function in a professional manner.
Thank you, Beth. Councilor C seven, Councilor Poto.
Yeah.
Miss, Council Kadeem has the floor.
Go ahead, Councilor.
Just gonna say, I didn't get to.
Yeah, you get to beat, you get, you get to beat me up first.
He raised his hand. I saw him, so I'm sorry.
It's okay. Um.
Councilor C one, Councilor Kadeem, go ahead.
So first of all, I apologize, uh, Ms. Fauntz, and I know you've reached out, and I told you I was in support of this. Um, we kind of connected on some stuff via text message. I never got back. And I'm one for, once I commit, I commit. However, um.
However.
However, um, you know, that's what happens when you call, that's what happens when you call me during lunch and I'm hungry, right? So.
Well, I'm hungry right now.
My focus was on food. So part, part of the concerns that I have is, is just the long-term strategy that we have. So I'm, I'm, as I told you on the phone, I'm super supportive of EMS and, and what you folks want to do, and I, and I recognize the money that's coming in. Um, I just need to get a better understanding of where we are long-term. So I, I know we were looking to build a facility. Um, we've got two point seven million dollars that's been appropriated for, uh, a space building. I know we're looking at, um, some, you're shaking your head now? Oh, it's, uh, one point two, I'm sorry. Thank you for the correction. Um, so even, I guess that the math is even worse now. Uh, so one point two million dollars for your building, we've, we've got some, I guess, a property that we've identified it that's going through tax title, just waiting for the decree, I would assume, to come in. And then looking to build a complex that's gonna house.
Correct.
Office space plus some additional, um, I, I guess, not, not all of your operations is gonna be going out of that. That station. So you're still gonna have ambulances that are located, um, in the various fire stations, whether it's, uh, Candaeus or, um, over on Globe, right?
Uh, the Candaeus isn't really, um, as much of a concern as the Globe because they go all the way down to Last Street in Fall River. I don't think even if you were centrally located in Fall River, that, in centrally located, that you would still be able to provide the response times. Um, uh, Rescue Five, which is in the north end station, um, was part of the hut, hut was built with HUD money and has, is services the industrial parks. So again, we wouldn't be able to responsibly be able to pull that truck out of that station and the, the Eastern Avenue Station. But we have our training division, which runs our EMS school, is in, is up at Commerce Drive. And I have my operation division, which is also up at Commerce Drive. So our trucks, for our trucks to be able to get in-service training, I have to pull those trucks that are from them, those far-end stations all the way up north to be able to get any in-service training. And if they're able to complete the in-service training without getting a call, it becomes an issue. So to have something more centrally located certainly makes more sense. Um, so our administration right now, we have MIH, we have three people in the government center in one office. We're hoping that if we're able to get this rental space, we'll at least be able to get some of the, um, storage issues that we have out of that building. I have two people in professional standards in one office. Then I have, um, my two deputies are in the main office at the government center, so everybody's just kind of, kind of squished. And that's part of the biggest concern about trying to meet the operational needs and trying to have everybody who can be cohesive and be on the same page. And, um, hopefully eventually in a couple of years or wherever, if we can work out a final plan, then, then we would be able to, to get that accommodated.
Okay. So can, can I ask the two hundred and forty-three thousand, is that annual or is that total contract?
It's, uh, it's annual with, with the utilities, all utilities are included. Um, and it gives us garage space for eight vehicles and would be able to accommodate, um, twelve dorm beds in that room.
So I, I guess that, that's, so this is where my concern comes from. So we've got two hundred and forty-three thousand annually for a short-term fix, so over three years. Right? So just round it up, that's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, right? So that's sixty-two percent of what it's gonna cost us to build a new facility, right? So if we're saying that we're, we've got tax title, we've got a, we've got a parcel that we're essentially gonna be taking over, we're going through the tax title process, it's just in the matter of, of getting the land court to give us a decree to move forward with that, then we're gonna start doing design for this, this building, I would believe. And if it's a space building, I guess maybe there's not a whole lot of design that would be needed for a space building. Uh, we're talking about two years out. To, to spend seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a three-year period, that's only for a temporary fix to, to move, if I'm understanding you, to move folks out of center station into this, to this building. From a financial standpoint, doesn't, doesn't make sense. I, I don't, I just don't see what the benefit is. If we were talking that there was a long-term, uh, plan for that building, the use of that building, then I, I think, I would say something completely different. However.
The benefit is that it's almost impossible to be able to run this second contract without having the ability to have a reasonable space for the people to work out of. And I know I entered into the agreement, so I own that, right? My initial plan was to, I thought about it, if we could get it through the bond committee, was to take the, the balance of the bond that we have, the one million dollars. If we were able to get that tax titled property, was to purchase the property, clear, you know, get it tested, get the architectural plans, all that done out of the current bond that we have, and then figure out what the feasibility is and then bond the building going forward. Um, this new contract, just with St. Anne's alone, we'll be able to pay for the lease for this building in one month. It's just three hundred and sixty, uh, three hundred and sixty dollars, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars a month.
No, no, don't, I'm not, don't confuse the, I guess, the concern I have. I'm, I'm not concerned about whether or not we can afford to pay for it. We can afford to pay for it. My concern is, is whether it financially makes sense, right? Because from my standpoint, if it's temporary, I for one can't say, cause I, I'd rather use that three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, put it into a, a stabilization account and not go out to bond for, uh, for your building, right? Save the taxpayer money. That, that's, that's my take on, on the situation. So.
I can speak to that some. We've had these conversations. Uh, we had the same concerns, so we've had this in the same, you know, manner of, you know, why spend that money now when we could save it to pay for this? The problem is that no matter what, even if we had a lot available today, you are talking about at least two years to do the full construction of this. And in the meantime, it's getting to a point where it's not sustainable. So we feel like it's more financially responsible to keep these contracts going at the way they are and keep this revenue increasing the way it is and pay for a temporary lease space until we can get to that full build-out. So there is a plan in place. We just don't have an exact timeline, but the, the goal is that within three to four years, we are completely out of leasing it, and we will have a full building that is fully built out to, to live at that point.
How many, I guess that's what I'm struggling to understand is, is where the benefit is. So what, what is it that the Brown Health taken, picking up that contract? What does that create in terms of additional resources or bodies or, or change in operation that we currently have now? That we couldn't, we couldn't, and I'm not saying it's the most, it's, it's the perfect solution, and it's, and again, it's only temporary. So if we just go through another two years or three years in the situation that we're in, knowing full well, at the end of the, at the end of the three years, we, we're gonna have a brand-new building on a piece of property that we are taking, taking over. That, that's, I guess, where I'm trying.
I understand what you're saying. So if all of our programs kind of feed off each other, so our referrals from our MIH program come from our, from our nine-one-one transports. Some of the referrals from our, our MIH program come from our repeat transports that we bring home for the hospital. So in order for us to be able to build the MIH program, which is the future of EMS, right? Like fire prevention was to fire service, MIH is gonna be the prevention that the insurance companies need to drive down healthcare costs. If we don't have the support of the community facilities and the referral process, then we're, we're not gonna be able to succeed with moving forward with that program.
Councilor.
So, so, I, I, I'll, I'll get back to you for a second. So I know MIH is, is where we're gonna be going. I wholeheartedly disagree with it. I think, again, it's another play on health insurance, but I understand that we're now gonna get into a business because we've gotta minimize, you know, the cost for insurance, and we've gotta go do home visits. I, I don't, I don't think that's what we should be doing as a, a paramedic service for a municipality. But I understand that that's the direction the industry is going down. I don't know why we need to enter into a contract immediately today with Brown Health to start doing all this transportation and why we can't wait until we have our property and a building that is capable of handling the operations. That, that's my take.
In answer to your question, the Brown Health contract is not what's putting it over the edge. The Brown Health contract really only entails having two trucks, right? It's the, it's the fact that even before Brown Health, we were, we were working with the fire chief to jockey trucks around to make sure that they could fit their spare trucks here and that we could fit an ambulance there or, and then there, um, we, we just have two spare vehicles that are outside, um, behind the shop over at On Commerce Drive that we can't stock with medical supplies because they're outside, and we don't have the ability to bring them indoors, so we have no temperature control. So it's not that this is something that is necessary for us to do, but we've entered into a contract with South Coast, and we're doing a great job and we're providing great service. Uh, the Brown Health contract is not what's driving us over the edge. It's just simply the amount of peo- people that we have to maintain these contracts. We've just outgrown the space that we have. That's, that's the bottom line.
Council, Council, I've, I, in the discussions that I've had with the mayor, okay, over the last couple of days, the last couple of weeks, um, uh, looking at this property, I had my reservations, just like you, with, with the amount of money. Um, but I think we're looking long-term. Um, I don't see, uh, the need for a new building. Um, I think that, um, there have been discussions with the landlord, the person that owns the property, to do maybe, uh, if we wanted to, a short-term lease, if we want a purchase to own. Um, I, I think it's a building that's beautiful. I mean, I went and looked at it. Um, I think it, it services exactly what, um, uh, is needed for the EMS. Um, and, and if it was my way of doing things and in discussion with the mayor, this is a long-term, this is, the, the, I, I look at this as a long-term.
So look, can I, and I appreciate that. Um, trying to figure out how the most professional way to, to, to say this. Um.
Yeah, just say it.
So one, we, the, the agreement before us is a three-year lease, right? So regardless of what we're talking about, we're talking about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I would ask you, if you own the property and the city was paying you two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, would you sell the property? So that being said, if the property is not sold, we're now in a situation where we spent seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the property, and then we still have to go now look for land, buy a building, we're out seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If, for whatever reason, we get rid of the property that we're getting for foreclosure, now we have to look for another property, which is gonna be, again, cost prohibitive potentially. Um, so that, that's where, unless, unless you're coming with me, that we have a, an agreement in place to purchase the property. For me, the only thing I can look at is, is that we've got a three-year contract before us, uh, for a three-year lease. And my standpoint is, is that I personally think it's excessive for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars if we are gonna build a new facility and, and can be done in three years, even call it four years. I mean, at, at some point, you know, if, if you've, if you've outgrown your home and you know you're building a house, are you gonna go rent another house for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, know that you're building a million-dollar home? I mean, the answer is no, right? So if it was our own money, we.
Depends on the wife.
Well, listen, I, I, reason would tell you no. You, you stick, you stick it out knowing that you're building, you're building a house, right? You're not gonna go into a more expensive house because you know in a couple of years, your house is gonna be built.
Maybe, maybe we sit down with the current landlord, the current owner, and we do a short-term lease with an option to purchase. We haven't talked about that with him yet. We've talked a little bit about that, um, with an option to purchase. I just see this property as being a very, very nice property. It's centrally located. It's in a beautiful area. It's, it's, it's been, uh, uh, it's got exactly what we need.
I, I don't disagree with you. So from, from my standpoint, prior, prior to us having this conversation, the plan had always been that we were gonna go build a facility. So based on the information that I, I've, I've been given, I'm, I'm basing my decision on the fact that we are, the intent right now in the strategy, unless that changes, and I don't have that information, right, other than what you're saying now, that we're gonna move in a different direction. So it's, it's hard to support it, and without having documentation saying that there is an agreement to be, you know, to, to purchase it, that's fine.
I wouldn't. I would not.
So we, you know, um, I did this with all good intent, right? So our employees are.
Motion.
Our employees are important, morale's important, and I think that any good chief is gonna advocate for their employees. And it's discouraging to, um, try to meet the operational needs without the tools that you have. And so I tried to, I felt that the most responsible thing to do was to take my FY twenty-six budget and be able to, I'm not asking to use free cash, I'm not asking to use one-time money. I'm trying to say, let the business pay for itself.
It's not a business. Can you, can you please stop saying it's a business? It's not a business.
It is, it is, no, it's not a business. It's just, it's all, it's all, it's all our department. I apologize. But I'm trying to, to get my department to, to be able to support my department the best way that I can.
And I, and I recognize that, chief. I, I, I do, and I'm supportive of it. What I am, what I am saying and what I'm struggling with is is the fact that we have a plan, which in two or three years, we will have a new building. So you spend seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars when, yes, the, is it ideal to be in the, in, in the stations that we're currently in? No. But at the end of the day, you're still gonna have rescues that are outside of this building. Not, you, you're not taking your entire operation and putting it into this building, right?
Quite a bit of it.
It's putting this program. It's not putting the, the typical service. It's putting this whole program there, and that's what we've run out of room for in the stations. The stations weren't meant to run that program.
We'll get my spares up from outside into the building and will allow me to stock my trucks so that if we have a switch-over, that there's equipment inside the trucks. It will allow the, um, community medicine vehicles that are currently parked behind engine companies to have a space to go.
Listen, I, I've said this before, we, we, we were getting too big, too fast, right? Bigger isn't always better. That, that was, I've said that a million times, and, and this is where we are. So now we're too big. We're gonna spend seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'm not gonna support it. You probably have the support of the councils. But to spend seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a building when we are gonna purchase, we have a property that is coming over, that is not gonna cost us any money, other than the fact that there is back taxes that are owed. We're gonna take it. You're gonna get, do some architectural design to put up a building and do it and get it done within four years, three years, four years tops, right? I, I mean, a building project from design to, to construction is only two years, okay?
It's the land court.
So, so, right, in the land court, and you can push the land court, if you need to push the land court to get the decree. So from my standpoint, to spend that money on a temporary solution does not make sense. That's, that's the only thing. It's, it's not, it's not that I don't wanna support the department. It's not that I don't wanna give you the resources that you need. I just think it doesn't make sense to spend the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars when I know in three years, two years, we have the ability to give you the, you know, the facility that you need.
Okay, thank you.
With that, I yield.
Thank you. I just wanna say one thing. I don't know what the year was, but the Empire State Building was built in one year. Just a true fact. Um, do we know what the value is of this property? Mr. Dion, Emily, anyone?
The rental?
The property that we're looking to go into a lease agreement. You know what the value is?
I, I looked it up. The, uh, the assessed value is two fifty-seven. The, the last sales price was eight hundred thousand dollars.
Eight hundred thousand dollars.
For the purchase price, but the assessed value is, um, was like two hundred and fifty thousand.
I'm just curious what the value is of the property. Councilor C seven, Councilor Poto.
Thank you. The only question I had was, outside of the two hundred and forty-three thousand per year for three years, are there any costs you're gonna have to put in, into the building to get it to the standard you need it for EMS?
Um, the owner is taking care of all the upgrades that would be needed to, for EMS to move into the building. Our outside costs that we pay would just be the wifi connection in the building. Um, all the other utilities and costs are included.
Okay. And do you have any, any sense what the value of those upgrades are that the owner's taking on?
Um, I, I don't.
We haven't entered into a, a lease agreement at this point in time, so it, it's, it's hard to say, um, you know, the, the person owns this building, there's another person that owns another building. So at this point in time, it's not, it's not a done deal. We could get something like that.
But does it define exactly what needs to be put into place for this to work?
Yes.
Okay. So you, so you at least you have that, but as far as the value, you're not exactly.
Yeah, I just don't have the.
We didn't, we, um, we wanted to follow the rules because there's been some, you know, we wanted to make sure that we did it the right way. We haven't even awarded the RFP until we had the, the funding made available so that we could do it in the appropriate manner.
Yeah, fair. I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor C two, Councilor Dion.
Um, so I have to say that my, my line of thinking is the same as the Councilor in seat one. Um, we have one point two million dollars, um, in a bond. Well, let me start with this. This goes back to twenty-twenty-one. I can show you. I have this. I have this. I have the. Well, let me start with this. This goes back to twenty twenty-one. I can show you. I have this, I have this, I have this, and four other things where people came before us. It started at two point seven. It was gonna be up at On Commerce Way. Um, there was gonna be a building to put vehicles in, 'cause you didn't have enough. Uh, medical supplies were gonna be able to be kept there, et cetera, et cetera. And then it changed to, um, construction and renovation of buildings to be used initially by EMS department, including payment of costs incidental. The buildings to be affected by construction shall be central fire and the marine biology wing at Durfee High School. And then it wasn't that anymore. The very last meeting was October twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. I respectfully request a loan order amount be sent for council approval. The original amount of two point seven was appropriated in twenty-one. Due to cost increase and the growth of EMS, the increase to three point two million will fill the needs for the department, enabling EMS to upgrade the central station and build a storage garage for our spare EMS units. Currently, we have three spare apparatus sitting outside in the elements due to no storage space uh, at any of the fire stations. Medical supplies would also be stored in the building due to the shortage of space at Central Fire. I guess my point is, so yes, I went back to all my files because I save everything. And it's been one plan after another, after another, after another. Nothing has ever happened. Um, and I agree that if we're gonna buy a piece of property, I don't know what it's gonna cost. I don't know what the building is gonna cost. But you take that one point two with that seven hundred, if you're talking, you, two million dollars that we would have sitting in the bank, ready to go. Um, you know, if somebody could come before me and say, yes, you know what? We would like to lease you the building for one year, two years, three years. And at the end of that, you, we'll give you the option to buy the building. We wanna sell the building. We wanna be good community partners. I'd say, okay. Okay. Let's spend the money because we-
If I may, the owner is here. He's willing to come down and speak and tell you some more information. I'm okay with him coming down. We're in finance, community finance. We need to waive the rules. Would you like him to come down and answer some questions?
Yes.
Speak into the microphone and give your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
Scott Loebz, uh, owner of Cornell Street. I wanna clear up a few things. Um, I purchased that property for more than eight hundred thousand. It was well over a million. I invested over three hundred thousand in upgrades. It's no secret that EMS is busted at the seams. The solution needs to be done now. Uh, with that being said, I know you guys are forecasting a property down the road. But we know how plans go, like you said, Mrs. Dion. Year after year after year, it takes long. To satisfy the council, I have no problem doing a year-to-year lease and not locking you guys into three years. No problem. It's a valuable piece of property. It's up to you.
Are you going to sell it?
It's a valuable piece of property. Um, I, I own a lot of properties in Fall River. I'm not in the business of selling.
So the answer's no.
The answer's no. However, however-
That's okay. It's fair enough.
Yeah, I will give the city first right of refusal. I think it's a good way to see how-
Speak into the microphone, please, we can hear you.
I think it's a good way for the city to see the growth of EMS, 'cause it could go further. You, you really don't know what size building you need. She's doubled her staff the, the last three years, from thirty-six to sixty-four to a hundred and two. The staff is in a fire station facility that women aren't even comfortable being in. They have multiple bathrooms, private showers, their own gym, two-street access, a private streetway with no easement, on-off highway. Ideally, it's the perfect location. I'm actually helping them out. It's great to have the city as a tenant, but I think it's a no-brainer, Sean.
Just point of information, so the eight hundred thousand is just coming off, and I don't know what you pay for. I'm just going off the GIS system, which anybody can access on the website, so the last sale price was eight hundred thousand.
There was two buildings, so you probably only grabbed the one instead of-
It, it's a total of three parcels that's being leased out. Two buildings plus a big parking lot fenced in for security. Um, I ended up putting two hundred and seventy-five thousand down, financed the other eight. So it was one point seven five, plus the three hundred thousand in upgrades. And I would assess that property right now well over two million dollars.
That's fair assessment. Thank you.
I can pull that for you.
Hopefully it'll sell.
No, no, I get it. I get it.
I put in the address, the GIS mapping, it has all-
I wish I paid eight.
Counselor Dion, you still have the floor, Counselor, seat two. Good thing these kids don't have homework.
I, I get it.
I, I look at this. It's a beautiful building. I get it.
Oh, yeah.
It is, will it accommodate the needs? Yes, it will. Do I wanna say, no, don't do it? I don't want, I don't wanna take that route, but at the same token, we need something concrete. We need something that financially benefits the city. Um, I feel like we're always, always, I don't even, I, I, I don't know, the rents that we've paid over the years. I, I just feel like we've thrown money away over the years in these rental situations. The city has never taken- How many properties have we foreclosed in? How many have we taken in tax title? Instead of selling schools for five thousand, maybe we should've kept them and done something with them and turned them into an EMS center or another fire station. This, this is where I'm going. I, 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 I just get frustrated when I feel like we're, and I forget what the saying is, throwing good money after bad or bad money after good.
Then let us go short-term. Let us go year by year then.
Yeah.
If you don't wanna make the three-year commitment-
I'm not gonna have a hard time finding a tenant for that property.
As long as you don't raise the rent. But we'll, we'll, we'll make sure of that.
Counselor Dion, I, I'm gonna be honest with you. I don't see the city finding a property and building
It's beautiful.
a facility for that.
It's absolutely beautiful.
No, and I get that. And, and, you know what?
So in the meantime, yeah.
If I, if I, you know, if, if I knew in three years, the city could, absolutely could purchase the building, I'd be like, okay, there, there's a, there's an end to this. There, there's a plan, a concrete plan.
I get it.
It's not concrete.
I get it, but what if in three years, that building's not even big enough? Right?
Well, I guess we'll have to worry about the bridge when we come, worry about that when we come to it. I don't know what to tell you.
I, I, I know it's the job, I know it's the job of the council not to spend funds foolishly. I get it. But you have a department that's already busted at the seams.
You know, they, they moved into Central Fire. There's two point seven million dollars being invested in that building to upgrade that building because they needed places to sleep. They needed better bathrooms. They needed, so everything they needed, we're doing at Central Fire, correct?
But not just for EMS.
It's not, I know it's not just EMS. However, it's gonna, there are separate female and male quarters when this is completed. It, it's, it's still a two point seven million dollar investment, no matter how, how you look at it.
The central fire station renovation doesn't change the accommodations or the amount of accommodations for the employees. It cha- it's, it's basically, um, it is gonna make some of the accommodations for showers and better bathrooms and, and stuff like that. But most of the renovations that are being done in there is not gonna change the amount of sleeping space or dorm space that's in that building.
Correct. It, it's, it doesn't increase what we already have. That, that building is only meant to have this emergency response team in there between fire and EMS, and right now it's housing a lot of these transport services as well, and that's what it's not equipped to handle. None of the fire stations were equipped to handle these additional programs, and that's the problem that we're running into.
I would like the opportunity to sit down with Mr. Loebz and discuss the purchase and sale of, of, I know he said he won't sell it, but I would like to have that sit-down to talk with him. We've had it once before. The mayor and I had that discussion with him.
We can always take-
And, and it's something, and it's something that, um, it's in the future of the EMS. I can't, I, I just, I see that as the plan, as EMS having, having their facility at that location.
Um, next meeting is in three weeks. Is that too long?
All I'll say is, our, the current RFP that was put out, we are technically supposed to issue
Yes.
within thirty days. We are gonna run out of that in a matter of, I think, about ten days now. Um, we can issue a request for an extension. That's a request, so I think at this point, there might be some willingness for that, but at the same time, we're, it's not, it's not gonna change. I mean, we, we just risk losing it and losing more time is all.
Okay, so once, a- and-
It's not gonna change in three weeks.
So once again, here we are. We have a deadline. Your backs are against the wall. Again, in ten days, this is gonna expire.
It's, it's not-
No previous discussions.
In my defense, we went out for an RFP and because we, we didn't have the response from the RFP in the last city council meeting, we didn't award the RFP because we wanted to do it in the correct manner, so we waited for this meeting to bring it forward. It was simply logistics of the time that the RFP went out and the amount of city council meetings we had in the meantime.
I, I also wanna be clear. It's not, it's not that you have to respond to this. We don't have to accept an RFP. We don't have to do any of that. The, the statement of three weeks is, you want a five-year structural plan to move forward and build a building, and how much space we're gonna need, and where it's gonna land. And three weeks is just not, it's not gonna do that for us at this point in time. So it's part of it is we need to act on something, and if we're gonna consider this, then we'll do that extension, but it's, it's a much bigger plan that you're looking, a concrete plan to build a whole structure or not is gonna take us more than three weeks to decide on.
Okay, I guess my point is that we're, we're having another meeting in three weeks. Is three weeks long enough to have a discussion? And then at that point, just say, this is what it is, and go from there.
What's the discussion? We could have it now. Is it a one-year, one-year term?
Doesn't work that way.
Yeah, I, I can't, I can't set the term with you. You have to set the term with the administration.
So, and, and to be honest with you, the term is not being set now. We're just asking for a funding increase to have an ability to issue a, a lease agreement at all. So all right now, we're looking for is funding, and the lease issuance or agreement is-
We're willing to go short-term.
Separate.
If he wants to go one year, we will do one year, short-term, and then we'll go-
Point of, point of information, that doesn't change anything. That doesn't, whether it's three years, it's still the same. You haven't changed anything.
Just throwing it out there.
Because once you move in, you're not moving out, un- until he kicks you out, right? Like, that's, 'cause that's, that's ultimately what's gonna happen.
You said in three years, I'd be moving out to a new building, so.
No, we, we renew it, right? That's just-
You know.
All right, I yield.
A lot happens in three years.
Counselor, seat five, Counselor Vice President.
Yeah, I just have a question. Carlos, I'm that building. Can you build up?
I don't believe so.
You can't build up, so there's no room for expansion.
Oh, there's plenty of room for expansion.
In the parking lot.
On the parking lot, on the side, you can add a space metal building.
But there's three parcels. You're talking about buying all three parcels?
There's an enormous amount of room that you could, you could, uh, increase the surfaces at that location.
What are we renting? One parcel, two parcels, the whole three? All three parcels.
The value that you gave for two million, was that for all three parcels?
Yes. So it's all three parcels, okay? The other thing is, I did speak with Matt Thomas about the, uh, property that is going into foreclosure, which there are issues with because of people that are deceased and other things, and an appraisal was going to come in, and we weren't gonna get an appraisal until, I believe he said, mid to late September was when we'd get a copy of the appraisal and what it was valued at. Have we gone to land court yet with it? I don't know. I just asked him what that property was worth. And he said he was having an appraisal done. So I don't know where, where that's at. But I do understand the circumstances of everybody just really, uh, you know, being a tight facility where there's, and I certainly don't wanna see ambulances outside. Um, and I don't wanna see fire trucks outside. I mean, we pay good money for this equipment. You wanna have it garaged. But I just wanted to throw that out there about my conversation with, um, Mr. Thomas, and I wondered how much expansion could be done there. And if it can be done there, right, if you wanna go with a year, I'm willing to go with a year, and let's see how that works. Because maybe the other one, the other location, won't be feasible. Maybe it'll be too much.
We don't know if there's any contamination on the property. Nothing's been done on that property.
But at least, let's give it a year to see where we're going, what we can do. Because they do bring in, what's your contract with South Coast now? Is it two million?
Two and a half.
Two and a half million with, uh, with South Coast, so they certainly have enough to pay.
How much would you bring in with, um, with, uh,
With brown?
With brown?
We're looking at four point, four point, between four and four point five for both contracts.
Four, four point five for both.
Without the addition of the, um, MIH programs.
Without the addition?
Correct.
So that would even bring in more. And I mean, the EMS have funded five, um, firefighters. They have bought equipment. So, you know, I know that we don't wanna call it a quote "business," but with the money that's being generated, it's being spent on, you know, services in the community, on our safety officers and safety services, so. With that, I yield. Just wanted to share that.
Counselor, seat one, Counselor, can you follow?
Thank you. Here's, here's my frustration, is, is, and I, and I've said this before. The failure to be able to plan long-term, okay? There is absolutely zero strategic planning. The goalpost continues to move. It is the most frustrating thing ever. We were supposed to be located in Durfee. We were supposed to be building a, a space. We were supposed to move in here, and now we're gonna enter into a one-year contract, maybe the property owner, and I, and listen, and I don't disagree with him. I would never sell the property either. Right? Like, I wouldn't. And, and I would be in the same situation, advocating for us to go year-to-year, whatever the case may be. In ten years, if we ent- if we go into that building, we will be there in ten years. That's two point four mi- uh, four million dollars that we have just spent, right? Because what are we doing? We came back and we said we were gonna use the, the property that's going into foreclosure. We were gonna, we were gonna do all the stuff, but we haven't done anything. So, so why, why is it that every time we come down now, at, at the last minute, we've got a change in plans? Like, can, can somebody, and I, and I, and I beg, I beg, I am begging the administration to stop coming down with these half-hearted plans and then move the goalposts the very next meeting.
So, in twenty twenty-one, um-
Twenty twenty-one, think about that. Twenty twenty-one, four years ago, we had five different plans.
It was COVID, and that's why we, we priced out a building in twenty twenty-one. By the time COVID was over, the building went from being three point one million dollars-
All right, so let me, let me ask, and I don't mean to interrupt, but I'm gonna interrupt, so let me ask you, in twenty twenty-one, in twenty twenty, during COVID, your staffing levels went from what to what?
My staffing levels?
Yep, 'cause we decided to go, 'cause that's, that's when the, the MIH plant, right, okay.
So we went up to, we went from, we increased by two trucks, so about sixteen employees.
Sixteen employees. And so since twenty twenty to now, how many employees have we increased?
We, we're at a hundred and four.
A hundred and four, so we added a hundred and four new employees, and at no point-
No, we didn't add a hundred and four, but we're at a hundred and four.
Okay, so, so how many did you add?
We added about forty-five in the last two years.
Okay, so forty-five, just rounded up to fifty. You added fifty new employees. And at no point did the administration say, this is what we're gonna do. Here's the game plan. We know we're going into a different, uh, program. We're gonna start transporting, and we had all this conversation about whether or not we should be transporting. Why are ambulances are going from South Coast to, to Cheltenham, going all the way to, to Worcester, to Boston, to all these other places that are not benefiting? And I know, we're, we're, we're treating it like a business. We're bringing in additional revenue, and I, and I respect that. But with that comes overhead, it comes, uh, benefits, it comes retirement, it comes, uh, equipment, and I understand that you are bringing in money. But I've said from day one, we are getting way too big, too fast, without a plan. That is my, my take. So if that was the program we wanted to do, we should've had a plan in place to say, okay, this is where we're gonna go. We need a facility. We need to be centrally located. This is what we need to do, and this is how much it's gonna cost us. If we would've did that five years ago, we wouldn't be in the situation. It'd be a lot cheaper than where, where we're standing. I for one, not, will not be supporting it unless we have, not a first, right, a first refusal. Unless we have a lease agreement with the option to purchase at the end of the, at the end of the year. Or come back to, to us with a plan. If it's not the foreclosed property, let's figure it out. We've got a number of properties that we could be looking at. We just, we just sold out the, uh, the Sylvia School. We could've kept that. We could've put in a space building. We could've been centrally located right in the same spot. We just sent that, uh, sold that for two hundred, two hundred thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Right, so this is what I'm talking about when we start talking about the long-term planning. I need strategic long-term planning, not, not yes-me-to-death that we're gonna have this vision and this is what we're gonna do. 'Cause I will support, and I am a big supporter of EMS. I'm a big supporter of the fire department. I'm a big supporter of public safety in general across the board. But what I do not support is the fact that we're gonna spend money after money after money, and it doesn't make sense for the city, number one, or for the taxpayers. And I understand EMS, and I'll give you the opportunity to speak, and I understand that there is no rate that is being charged to the residents, so you can make the argument that there is no tax dollars going towards it, but I would make the argument that there is because there are OPEB contributions across the board, retirement, pension, everything, right, that we need, we need to discuss. So from my standpoint, it is just, it is frustrating. I absolutely wanna support you and give you the resources that you need. But from my standpoint, spending two hun- But from my standpoint, spending two-hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, whether it's a one-year or a three-year contract, is gonna turn into a ten, fifteen, twenty-year agreement on a lease, and it it does not make sense.
I would like to just defend a little bit. So, in twenty-twenty-one, we had decided that we were expanding. And we were gonna build the building up north, right, and we were gonna have the building, and then COVID hit, and then the building went up three times the price. So, then the city administrator at the time had us go and tour the marine sections of the NAGO buildings. That went on for six months, or eight months, or nine months, and then that got pulled out from underneath us, right? So, that was no longer an option. And then we went back to, okay, well, we're gonna take the bond, and we're gonna upgrade the center station, right? Which, so we would we would take that three-point-two million dollars, and we will upgrade the center station. Well, in the meantime, the upgrades to the center station have increased, so we're looking at a two-million-dollar increase in um upgrades to the center station, which the bonds that we've changed over and over. Then we said, well, we'll we'll just take that, and we'll build a garage. Well, the garage doesn't do anything because it doesn't give you any sleeping quarters for your employees for in the dorms. It will pull my trucks in from outdoors, yes, but that was nine-hundred thousand dollars.
Can I ask you, I don't I don't mean to interrupt, so you keep talking about sleeping quarters, so are you running twenty-fours even with the transports?
Correct.
Why are we doing that?
Because we do transports all night long.
No, I understand that, but why why wouldn't you why wouldn't you do it in twelves? Does the contract call for twenty-fours?
We do impact trucks, but our our contract does involve twenty-fours. So, again, and and to be perfectly honest, most of the people who are extremely injured, sick or train wrecks come at two in the morning. That's the ones that need transport to Rhode Island Hospital or the people that need to go to Beth Israel. But we've constantly tried to kind of move forward, and I and I understand your frustration, and I and I apologize if I sound offensive. But the garage was not a solution either, so to spend nine-hundred thousand dollars on a garage that was gonna simply be a Band-Aid didn't make sense. So, then we started looking at the um the piece of land that we've been talking about. That's been about a year or a little over a year, and I keep they're praising it. It's a tax title. So, we've been being patient. We're sitting back and waiting. Well, now we're to the point where we we felt that we needed to have space, and this was the way to go. And and um that's, it's not like we've continually changed the channel. The channel's continually been changed.
Alright. So, the Sylvia School, I can speak to that. The demolition alone of that was upwards of over two and a half million because of the contaminants of the rest of the buildings that still needed to be taken down, and that was a big part of where it just became not cost-effective for us to do it anymore. Somebody who's not in um the wages that we need to pay to do work like that could demo it for cheaper, and also will do more with it on the backend that will make them money to recuperate it, and we wouldn't be able to do that with this. But we did consider it, absolutely.
But at two-hundred and forty-three thousand, the cost back, the the payback period is ten years, right? So, like I-
That's just the demo. That wasn't building a new building.
I recognize that, but I and and I'm not and I'm not suggesting the chief, cuz I know she wasn't in the position of chief when we were having these conversations, but the the goal, nobody can deny that the goalpost has moved at least three times. So, with that, I know I know we got folks that need to be recognized. I'm not gonna be labeled a point. I just, I I I won't be supporting it as is if it's moving forward, so with that, I yield.
Thank you, counsel. No further questions?
No.
Thank you very much for coming down, everybody.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Motion to adjourn finance.
Second.
Motion to adjourn finance, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? City Council Committee on Finance is now adjourned. Guys, wanna take a two-hour break? The city council meeting will come to order. The clerk will call the roll.
Counselors Kadeen? Dion?
Here.
Hart?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Pereira?
Here.
Ponti? Raposo?
Yes.
Tiff?
Here.
President Kamara?
Here. Will everyone in the council chair please rise for a moment of silent prayer? Please remain standing for salute to the flag.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a purpose and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Before we begin the meeting, there are a number of citations that have been waiting here very, very patiently for the top ten students of Durfee High School. If I could have the stu- Can you hear me now?
Yep.
If I could have the students come down, please, the ones that are here. Not all top ten students were able to attend. So, we have an official resolution on behalf of the entire city council. These are the five of the top ten students of Durfee. Um if you could, just when I call your names and you speak, could you just tell us what college you're going to, if you are going to college? I'm sure you are top ten students. Or should parent be very upset?
Be leaving pretty soon.
It's an official resolution, resolution, be it resolved that the city council hereby extends its accommodation to each member of you in recognition of BMC Durfee High School Top Ten Student Class of twenty-twenty-five. Be it further resolved that the Florida City Council extends best wishes for continued success, and that this resolution be entered into the records of the city council. It was adopted at the last meeting, June fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five, proposed by the entire city council, every member, signed by myself, council president, and the clerk, Allison Bouchard. First, Owen Mitchell Moniz, Solitarian. Congratulations. And when we're done, just tell me what college you're going to.
Uh, Rensselaer Polytech Institute.
Political science?
No, data computer science.
Good for you. Hold on one second.
Good for you.
Next, Madison Marie Ferreira.
Uh, Northeastern University, and I'm studying PR.
What is she studying?
PR.
Oh, nice.
Next, we have Michaela Isabel Gonzalves.
I'm going to Emmanuel College, and I'm studying nursing.
Emmanuel.
Emmanuel studying nursing.
Yeah, long words.
Casey Agia Juarez.
I'm going to Georgetown studying biochemistry.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Not political science, none of them.
And we have Madison Tabascas. Tabacus.
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 I'm going to Northeastern University, and I'm studying nursing.
So, I was not in the top ten. None of those counselors were in the top ten. I know most of them. They went to school, I mean. Congratulations to all of you. Um also, the rest of this top ten students could not be here with the valedictorian, Katharina Rumsey, Olivia Rumsey, William Rumsey, and Harry Zhang and Taweed Sade. They were not able to attend, but congratulations to all of you. You all make your parents very proud. You make us, as elected officials, knowing that you're in this community, very, very proud. Good luck to you in college, and we have a long and successful career.
And thank you to all the parents.
Congratulations.
Thank you to all the parents.
We have another city council meeting in three weeks. You're all welcome to come back and hear that one.
After this meeting, they're happy. They're not going into political science.
Madam clerk?
Uh, Mr. President, the first item before you is the mayor's request for confirmation of the appointment of Catherine Gibney as a member of the election commission.
Motion to confirm, adopt has been confirmed, has been made, and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number two is the mayor's request for confirmation of the appointment of Inej de Silva, Pauline Olite, to the uh position of city clerk.
Motion to confirm.
Motion to confirm has been made and seconded.
Roll call vote on that?
We're gonna roll call vote on that.
Get a roll call vote on that.
On confirmation, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Kilby?
Absolutely, positively, yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
Ponti? Raposo?
Yes.
Tiff?
Yes.
President Kamara?
Yes, of course.
Yay.
Congratulations.
Oh, I'm so happy for her. Such a good worker.
Couldn't happen to a nicer person.
Absolutely.
We're gonna have to extend the name tag. It's gonna go across the entire desk.
You're rolling tonight, council president.
That's what happens when you get tired. Madam clerk?
Item three is a communication from the mayor and a proposed ordinance regarding the establishment of a library programs revolving fund.
Motion to refer to committee ordinances.
Motion to refer to committee and ordinance legislation has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number four is a communication from the mayor and a proposed ordinance regarding creation of the position of supervisor of school crossing guards and adjustments to the current salaries of cross-
Motion to refer to committee ordinances.
Motion to refer to committee and ordinance legislation has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number five is the mayor's communication in an order appropriating two-hundred and forty-three thousand dollars to the EMS expenses from EMS revenues.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Roll call.
On adoption of the order, Counselors Kadeem?
No.
Dion?
No.
Hart?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
Ponti? Raposo?
Yes.
Tiff?
First, I was gonna to support support this, but after listening to all the facts from my colleague Sean and Council Dion, I think they are right because um-
It's just a yes or no. There's no discussion on the vote, is there?
Well, you can discuss on the votes.
No.
Vote was made in second, roll call. You can, you can keep going if you wanna explain why.
No, no.
You're fine.
President Kamara?
No.
The motion fails. Pass?
Four-four, tie, okay.
Item number six is a communication from the Chair of the Board of Election Commissioners and the warrant for the preliminary city election scheduled for September sixteenth.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have the Traffic Commission recommending amendments to the ordinances.
Motion to refer to committee ordinances.
Motion to refer to committee and ordinance legislation has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Whereas the recent Gabriel House assisted living facility fire was a tragic event for all within this Florida community, including residents, family members, and first responders. And whereas this devastating occurrence has brought to light the significant differences of inspection and emergency procedure regulations for assisted living facilities versus those applied to long-term care facilities, which are much more frequent and detailed within Massachusetts general laws. And whereas stricter regulations for assisted living facilities, such as more frequent safety-related inspections from various government and private entities, could assist with emergency response time, evacuation protocols, and adequate assistance for those who have mobility-related disabilities, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Ordinances and Legislation convene with Corporation Council, the Fire Chief, and the Director of Inspection Services to discuss the creation of an ordinance to impose stricter requirements for various types of inspections and emergency procedures for assisted living facilities within the city of Fall River.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Whereas providing community utility services to adjacent municipalities would strengthen collaboration in relation to environmental protection of nearby wetlands and reservoirs with neighboring communities, and whereas expanding the service area for these essential utilities could provide additional revenue for the water and sewer enterprise funds, which would financially assist with maintenance of vital infrastructure to continue providing safe drinking water and wastewater treatment. And whereas intermunicipal plans would also assist in ensuring long-term development, growth, and reliability of these important services, and help to lessen the financial burden on those who live or own property in the city of Fall River. Now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Finance convene with the administrative community utilities to discuss potential methods of developing intermunicipal community utility services and information regarding the possible financial, environmental, and public safety benefits that these service expansions may generate.
Motion to adopt.
Seconded.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Items ten and eleven are citations.
Motion to adopt ten and eleven?
Seconded.
Motion to adopt, motion to take item ten and eleven together.
Seconded.
Has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to approve?
Motion to-
Adopt.
Adopt items ten and eleven as been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item twelve is an order granting permission to Armindo and Cassandra Lima for the um opening of a curb at three-sixty-three Miller Street.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have an order authorizing the renewal of auto repair shop licenses at one-fifty-five Milliken Boulevard and three-thirty-four Rhode Island Avenue.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item fourteen is the police chief's report on licenses.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, police chief's report on licenses has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item fifteen are requests for the acceptance of streets. We have Fieldstone Lane, Brookfield Terrace, and Stony Brook Circle.
Motion to refer to the planning board.
Motion to refer to the planning board has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item sixteen are a number of claims which are in your packet.
Motion to refer to Corporation Council.
Motion to refer to claims are in the packet. The Corporation Council has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item seventeen is a communication from a city resident regarding a fallen tree in the area of Pulaski Park near four-sixty-six Warren Street.
Motion to refer to Department of Trees?
Seconded.
Motion to the Park Board, Commissioner, or Department of Trees and Semataries?
You refer to both technically?
We could.
Refer to parks and cemeteries and trees?
Seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eighteen is an open meeting law complaint filed with regard to the Committee on Real Estate Meeting held on July fifteenth.
Motion to refer to Corporation Council.
Second.
Motion to Federation Council made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item nineteen is also an open meeting law complaint filed with regard to the Corporation, excuse me, City Council Meeting held on July fifteenth.
Yep.
Seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item twenty is a drain layer application.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve the drain layer's application has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item twenty-one is an application for structures um for the election division, and this is for downtown South Main Street, Bedford Street, and Pleasant Street.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Excuse me, I should've specified that particular application was for the period of September second through September sixteen.
Motion to approve has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item twenty-two are, is the application for structures on or over a public way for the Elections Department. These are also for downtown Bedford Street and Pleasant Street. This would run from October twenty-first through November fourth.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item twenty-three are also applications for structures on or over a public way. These were received after the um election request. These are for virtually the same locations, South Main Street, Bedford Street, and Pleasant Street. Um and this would, the request is for September fifth through October fifth. However, um the facilities has agreed that they would place these up as soon as the other banners are down.
And this is for the thirty-first Jenta five cable race.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve has been made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item twenty-four, minutes of the zoning board of appeals.
Motion to accept, place on file.
Motion to accept and place on file has been made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to take twenty-five to twenty-eight together.
Motion to take items twenty-five through twenty-eight, madam clerk, can you, um, can you read items twenty-five through twenty, please?
We have minutes of the city council public hearings from July fifteenth, the committee on finance on July fifteenth, the regular meeting of the city council on July fifteenth and the special meeting of the city council on July twenty-first.
Motion has been made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion carries. Motion to approve items twenty-five through twenty-eight has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item twenty-nine is a notice of casualty and loss at five ninety-three Ellsbury Street.
Motion to accept, place on file.
Motion to accept and place on file has been made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we have the mayor's request, um, to accept a donation of equipment and supplies, um, for the, um, fire department from Blount Fine Foods in the amount of fifty-one thousand, three hundred thirty-seven dollars and seventy cents.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The committee on ordinances and legislation at a meeting held on August twelfth voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying proposed ordinance, accompanied by an emergency preamble, be passed through first reading, second reading, passed to be enrolled and passed to be ordained, this is handicap parking ordinance.
Motion to adopt emergency preamble.
Motion to adopt emergency preamble has been made in second, all in favor?
Aye. Roll call.
Roll call.
On the emergency preamble, councillors Kadeem.
Yes.
Dionne.
Yes.
Hart.
Yes.
Kilby.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Ponti. Raposo.
Yes.
Tiff.
Yes.
And President Kamara.
Yes.
Motion to pass through all readings.
Motion to pass through all readings has been made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The committee on ordinances and legislation at a meeting held on August twelfth voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading. This is a miscellaneous traffic ordinance.
Motion still made.
Motion to pass through first reading has been made, a seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, we have a brief recess to sign the election warrant.
City council recess for two seconds. City council reconvene, madam clerk?
Mr. President, we have no further business.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn has been made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good night everybody, good job.